Good evening, everybody. We are calling the meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular virtual board meeting tonight that all can participate in remotely. You can join via Zoom. Specific directions and how to participate are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nvusd.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 7:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. I will check in to see if we have any public comment for tonight's closed session items.
We have no public comment.
Seeing that there are none, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. See you all at 7:00. Thank you. Good evening. We are reconvening to open session. My name is Elba Gonzalez-Mares, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely. You can join via Zoom. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Elba Gonzalez Mares, y esta es la mesa de educación del Distrito Escolar Unificado del Valle de Napa, NVUSD por sus siglas en inglés. La Mesa de Educación de NVUSD está llevando a cabo una reunión regular esta noche, en la que todos pueden participar de forma remota. Puede unirse a través de Zoom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. To access interpretation from a computer, click on the interpretation icon on the bottom of your screen from within the Zoom application. On a mobile device, click on the More button on the bottom of your screen and choose Language Interpretation from within the Zoom application. This is a separate channel that will allow you to hear English to Spanish translation concurrently. Please note, interpretation services are not available when you join our meeting by calling in. Our interpreters for tonight's meetings are Marcy Valdivieso and Claudia Lingren. May we have one of the interpreters please translate these directions on our English channels so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions.
Buenas noches a todos. Para su información, los servicios de interpretación en español van a estar disponibles para esta junta. De la manera en la que pueden ustedes tener acceso a los servicios, favor de fijarse en la parte inferior, en medio de su pantalla de Zoom. Pueden hacer un clic en el símbolo de mundo y elegir los servicios en español. También lo pueden hacer por medio de la aplicación Zoom si llaman por teléfono. Lo pueden hacer en un canal diferente y pueden elegir de nuevo en la parte inferior los servicios de interpretación. Si ustedes llaman telefónicamente a esta junta, desgraciadamente, los servicios en español, de interpretación en español, no van a estar disponibles de una manera simultánea. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Specific instructions on how to participate in the meeting are located on the Board of Education webpage on the district's website, nvusd.org/Board. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member. Trustee Gonzalez Mares.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Ricer.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Shu.
Present.
Trustee Dooley.
Present.
Coram, present. Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. Public participation remains virtual online only. This meeting tonight is in accordance with the open meeting rules in the state of California per the governor's order. On September 17, 2021, the governor signed Assembly Bill 361, which expressly extends the flexibility concerning the conduct of public meetings through January 1, 2024. Thus, NVUSD will continue to conduct our public meetings online until further notice. As trustees, we have returned to the boardroom. However, in order to ensure access to our meetings without any limitations, we are holding meetings online with remote access via Zoom for the public and guests. I'm going to start tonight with some basic instructions on how we are going to be using Zoom and involve the members of the community. All Board of Trustees and the Superintendent are in video throughout the entire board meeting from here in the boardroom. Other staff members are present by video. Members of the community will not be on video and will be muted except during public comment. During public comment, any member of the community that wishes to speak must raise your hand using the Raise Hand feature in Zoom. You will be unmuted and will be provided three minutes to speak. There are two ways to make a public comment within the time allotted for public comment on any ineligible agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, your name will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand are available on the district's website at nvusd.org/Board. To comment by phone, you will be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine to request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item. When it is your turn to speak, the last four digits of your phone number will be called out. You will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comment. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Instructions on how to raise your hand by phone are available on the district's website at nvusd.org/Board. In addition, community members were allowed to submit comments via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org up until 8:00 AM this morning. For every agenda item, I will prompt the meeting participants who have joined us via Zoom for public comment. Please follow the instructions just provided when you would like to comment on an item. Alright, we are now gonna move into report on closed session items. Trustee Gracia.
Yes. D2 personnel in closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendation. D2A1, Jordan Michaels to the position of Chief Technology Officer. And that concludes my report on closed session items.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia.
Thank you, Trustee Gracia and President Gonzalez Mares. We are very excited about this appointment. As our current CTO, Joe Bassinet, who we will miss, is pursuing a next opportunity, we're also filled with joy for him because he's been an incredible member of our team. I know Mr. Michaels is here, present in the board meeting. Mr. Michaels, would you like to address the Board of Trustees, given your appointment tonight?
Yeah, yeah, I just thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Masetti, and thank you to the board for this opportunity. I'm very excited and I'm ready to roll my sleeves and keep going with all the hard work we've been doing to provide employees and students with the absolute best service that we can. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels, and welcome. And Mr. Bassinet, I was just getting used to saying your last name here, so. But just wish you the best from all of us. We're all nodding in agreement for your next step. Okay. We are now going to go into our flag salute. I think I was going down the line here. So next is Trustee Chu to lead us on the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now into announcement, this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived videos can be referenced and located on the district webpage at nvusd.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district's webpage. We now move to item E4, which is approval of agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
A first by Trustee Gracia and a second by Trustee Water, student board rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose or abstain? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Masetti, who's joining us tonight?
Let's see here. I do not see any. Ms. Young, are you here tonight? I believe we were going to have them promoted, correct, Mr. Bassinet? I do not see Ms. Young. Mr. Gallegos or Ms. Walder? Am I missing them?
No, that is correct. I do not see them.
Yeah, they are not here. They are not present this evening, President Gonzalez Mares. I've been in meetings with all of them this week, so, and talking to them extensively, so if they're taking the night off, that's okay. They've been tremendous partners throughout the course of the week.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Right. As I always, we love to kick off our meetings this way. And this is the recognition of Students of the Month. We have tonight New Technology High School and Vintage High School, so we'll start with New Technology High School.
Hi, good evening. President Gonzalez Mares, Dr. Masetti, School Board Trustees. Very happy to be here tonight to have the opportunity to recognize New Tech High's Students of the Month for September and October. Our Student of the Month for September is Senior Sergio Chavez Ramirez. Sergio was selected to be the September Student of the Month by the New Tech High staff for his excellent academic record and because of his dedicated nature. His teacher, Ms. Wilson Regalia, shared that Sergio is an empathetic and deeply thoughtful human. He was curious and driven by inquiry, that he is generally interested in the world and its improvement. Ms. Wolf shared that Sergio has been an active leader in the school garden since he was a freshman and that he is curious and not afraid to dive into a big project. Ms. Gibson said she sees his strength on a daily basis and he's not afraid to ask those really tough questions. And Mr. Schaper said that Sergio was one of the first names he learned when he came to New Tech because Sergio and his friends were so welcoming and friendly. So I'm very happy to introduce you to Sergio Chavez Ramirez.
Hello, everyone. Sergio Chavez. I'm a senior from New Technology High School. I'm honored to have been chosen as one of the Students of the Month for New Tech. I want to thank all the staff from my school for choosing me and for believing I am worthy of this title. I would not have achieved this without the help from my teachers and advisors, who are always open to the questions I asked and helped me when I was confused. If it wasn't for their continued efforts through these difficult times, I would not have been able to continue with the pressure of school. They helped alleviate the burdens and were considerate of the difficulties I encountered as a student. I used to think what mattered most was just receiving an A and putting no more effort beyond that. But I learned that the effort and passion behind the work are what matters most. I believe I have found meaning through my work and no longer strive for just an A. I ask for the continued support of my teachers to guide me and to help me reach my goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergio. Next, our Student of the Month for October is Senior Leah Condon. Leah was selected by the New Tech High staff to be the October Student of the Month because she's an exceptional student and because of her strong leadership. Ms. Wilson Regalia shared that Leah is a deep-thinking and globally-concerned human who's committed to excellence for herself and others and values growth in a very conscious way. Ms. Keenan Hale shared that Leah is especially strong in thinking about the world around her, that she is curious, consistent, and imaginative about when and where to create solutions. Ms. Wolf says she's been a leader amongst her peers all the years that she's been at New Tech and that she sees things through and is someone that can be depended upon. And Ms. Nancy Hale says that Leah is a wonderful collaborator and that she expresses herself exceptionally well in both writing and speaking. And I'm very happy to introduce you to Leah Condon.
Hi, I'm Leah Condon. I'm a senior at New Tech, and I want to start out by saying thank you so much for choosing me to be Student of the Month. I'm really grateful for this opportunity. When I was younger, I used to think that being perfect meant getting good grades, or sorry, I used to think that in order to be a good student, I had to be perfect and I had to get good grades. And I couldn't get anything less than an A, and that mindset was really harmful to me. I feel like I wasn't able to fully learn and grow as a person. And once I got into high school, I started to unlearn that idea. And I learned that being a good student isn't just about perfection, it's about like being curious. And it's about being curious and passionate about your work, and I think I learned that because of like the new experiences and the new teachers and getting to collaborate with my peers. And so I'm really grateful for all the opportunities that high school has provided me and I'm thankful that the teachers, teachers who helped cultivate that idea for me and who are helping make it possible for other students to enjoy learning and enjoy school. So thank you so much for all that you guys have done and thank you for recognizing me.
Thank you, Leah.
Thank you, Principal Miller, and our Students of the Month at New Tech. We always, we miss having you here in the boardroom, that's for sure, but we can definitely sense your stories through our current situation of Zoom, but thank you very much for sharing that. Now we move on to Vintage High School.
Alright. Good evening, Dr. Masetti, NVUSD Board of Education, district leaders and audience members attending this evening. It's with extraordinary pride that I present to you the Vintage High School Board Students of the Month for the months of September and October. Vintage's Board Student of the Month for the month of September is Ethan Castellazo. Ethan's GPA thus far in high school is a 4.67. Ethan has never earned below an A in any class that he's taken at Vintage. And while not surprisingly, his transcript is littered with AP courses, what really caught my attention and impressed me as I analyzed it earlier this week was that this student, who is number two in his class, in the class of 2022, will have also completed the CTE woodshop pathway and CTE culinary pathway during his high school career. Ethan clearly looks to explore new areas and learn new skills. And so it shouldn't be surprising that during the pandemic, Ethan took up teaching himself chess and became Scuba certified. For additional activity, Ethan has participated on the vintage tennis team for three years and is the founder and president of the Disc Golf Club. Yes, Ethan is impressive in his interest, skills, and ability. But Ethan is also just an incredible human being to be around and to other students in our vintage community. This year, Ethan decided to take on the job of a peer tutor for our new Crusher Bridge class. This class is specifically designed for the 90 freshmen whose data indicates that they will need the most support to successfully navigate high school. Ethan's work as a peer tutor is changing the lives of the students he works with. And in reflecting with Ethan, seems to be teaching him a few things as well about what at-promised students most need. In our conversation time together, Ethan spoke about patience, about meeting students where they are, and about understanding the why behind their actions. He reflected that it is understanding where students are coming from that best gave him access to help them succeed academically. Sometimes, he said, this just meant listening, and sometimes it meant Ethan was sharing food with the students because they were just hungry. Ethan is a gift to Vintage High School and will no doubt be a gift to the university that is lucky enough to have him accept. He tells me his dream school is UCSB. I also know that Ethan will just be a gift to the world and no doubt make it a better place. I proudly present to you Ethan Castellazo.
Good evening, Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, and district leaders. It's an honor to be in front of you tonight, and even though I'm on Zoom and I'm only dressed nice from the waist up, I have a few people I'd like to thank. I'd like first and foremost to thank my loving and supportive family. Thank you to my older brother, technically my oldest friend, and a man who I hope to finally beat in ping pong one day. My older brother Connor's brilliant skills as an artist is what has inspired me to see the world through a creative lens and think colorfully. Thank you to my older sister Madison, whose passion for academic achievement and environmental conservation has set an excellent example for me my whole life. And thank you to my parents, who raised me in a home that encouraged hard work, individuality, and laughter. I would not be the person I am today without my parents, as through school hardship, as well as an appetite for adventure and excitement that provided me with countless stories to tell. These two people are beyond important to shaping, to the shaping of my character and future, and I couldn't ask for better role models. I love my family, and I'm extremely lucky to have and grateful to have these supporters so close to me. And I have a couple teachers I'd like to thank. I think they're on Zoom. So throughout my NVUSD career, my pre-calc and AP calculus teacher, Mr. Merkner, has stood out to me as an effective, interactive, and influential educator. I know he has endured a lot as a teacher during the virtual age, as I'm sure every single student and teacher did as well. But his persistence and commitment to teaching my class our calculus content was nothing short of impressive. His knowledge and expertise of his subject has furthered my own curiosity in math, and he continues to inspire me to improve and learn mathematics. Not only in mathematics, but his teaching compels me to grow as a student, striving to succeed. His mettle yet determined styles are rare and valuable combo that's created a great learning experience for me, and I love how he made me feel like we were all on the same team, working to solve a problem together and understanding that our students weren't perfect. I think it was in his class that I truly learned that it's okay to make mistakes and not to count myself out if I didn't get a concept right away, and that's a lesson I will hold on to and treasure forever throughout life. I hope this speech makes up for all the distractions I've caused in his class, but I can't promise anything for the future. I'd also like to thank Mr. Angle, my freshman year biology teacher. Although it was a fairly simple class, Mr. Angle's passion, enthusiasm, and sense of humor makes him one of my favorite teachers. The daily jokes on his board every morning that were usually met by crickets from our students were consistent pick-me-up and a reminder to laugh at life. However, although his jokes may have fallen flat, it was his constant jovial spirit for learning that caused me to have a similar attitude for school. And although I'm not 100% confident that I could tell you the difference between DNA and RNA, Mr. Angle's class exposed me to some fascinating biological concepts I'm sure I'll explore and expand on in the future. As someone who hopes to continue learning in an environmental science field, Mr. Angle's class is one I'll never forget. Karen optimism for her students will always look out to me as unique. I don't think, I'm far from assurance anywhere. I have absolutely no idea what my life will look like in one year. However, although the future may be a mystery to me, and although I'm still finding my way through adulthood, I can continue forward with the confidence that my educational experience in NVSD, from kindergarten to senior year, was filled with passionate teachers and unmatched support. Thank you to Mr. Angle, Mr. Merkner, and my family. I'm proud to be a vintage student and go crushers.
Thank you, Ethan. Vintage's Board Student of the Month for the month of October is Ella Powers. Ella is currently number one in the class of 2022 with an overall GPA of 4.75. As I glanced over her transcript, I was struck by the number of pluses. Yeah, not just all As, but 11 A pluses. And that didn't include the semester when everyone just got credits. Ella is clearly an academic powerhouse, but she's known most for her participation in the arts at Vintage. And her focus is choir. That means multiple choir classes every year. This year alone, Ella balances her three AP classes with three different choir classes, Vocal Music Workshop, Concert Choir, and Chamber Choir. Ella is the choir president. She participated in last year's West Side Story musical and has high hopes of being the lead in this year's musical. When not singing, Ella is the president of Vintage High School Enough Club. And also outside of school, she's an accomplished dancer, spending the last 14 years doing ballet, jazz, tap, and contemporary dance. Oh yeah, she's also a barista working hard at Starbucks as an employee where she saves money for college. Ella's dream schools are Brown, UCLA, and Northwestern, where she plans to major in international business or international relations. Ella's a rock star at Vintage, from the classroom to the stage. I'm thrilled to see how she'll rock one of those dream universities and go on to absolutely rock life. I proudly present to you Ella Powers. Ella, I think you're muted. We can't hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear her either.
Try turning your volume up maybe?
Yeah, we still don't hear her. Mr. Bassinet, is there some guidance there?
Yeah, try your settings on your computer. It's the mic settings on your Zoom. Ella.
Looks like there's no audio access. I sometimes have to test my audio when I'm in a meeting just to let it pick which one work, which one's working.
Let's see, Ella, see if there's a little arrow by your mute button. See if you can choose a different option there on the Zoom window.
Yeah, it looked like she got it. No, we can't hear you, Ella. Do you want to, do you want to, you want to come back in? You want to go out and come back in?
Maybe come on your phone.
Yeah. Or go through your phone. Do you want to do, do you want to do that? Well, she does. Okay. Yeah, that's a good idea. I know. Yeah, isn't that funny? Looks related to Ruby.
Hello.
Yeah, go ahead, Ella. Yay.
Okay, interesting start.
Take a breath. That's so nerve-wracking. You're gonna do great.
Good evening, Napa Unified School District Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Masetti, and district leaders. I'm honored to have been chosen to speak here as a Board Student of the Month. I would like to start by thanking my parents. I want to thank my mother for teaching me to be courageous and for her endless love. She's instilled in me a reminder to appreciate all aspects in life, but also to be strong in my morals and my identity. I would like to thank my father for teaching me the value of hard work and determination, for always reminding me the importance of the presence. These two people have provided me with the foundation for growth and achievement, and I am forever grateful for them. There are many people within the Napa Unified School District that have influenced me. This long list of amazing educators and administrators have all helped me to become the person I am today. However, there are three specific individuals that have really changed my life. Mr. Merkner is one of the most respectful, smart, and talented teachers I have ever had. I was lucky enough to be in his class both this year and last, and I can say without a doubt that I have genuinely enjoyed every class. Last school year was hard, as I'm sure you all know. Going to school through a computer screen was definitely a new experience. Even through a computer screen and eventually through short modified in-person classes, Mr. Merkner made the effort to not only teach his students, but to build a relationship with them. The time and effort Mr. Merkner put into every class made students want to learn, even if we were stuck at home. This year, I get to physically walk into Mr. Merkner's class every weekday and attempt some new form of a greeting or any bad joke I can come up with. However, what makes Mr. Merkner stand out from others isn't his acceptance of my terrible puns. It's that he not only taught me math or what the materials I was required to learn. He taught me to be inquisitive, to be curious, to push the boundaries of what I think I already know. Mr. Merkner has influenced me by supporting me and pushing me to learn more, to challenge myself. Although I'm not looking forward to learning derivatives, I am excited to have the rest of the year to learn new things about math and about myself and Mr. Merkner. Another teacher that has influenced me significantly is Mr. Teters. Since freshman year, the choir program that Mr. Teters has built has been a welcoming community I get to be a part of every day. Mr. Teters is so much more than just a choir director. He doesn't just teach his students the correct melody to sing or how many beats a note gets. Mr. Teters inspires all of his students to be passionate Mr. Teeters inspires all of his students to be passionate about the things they love to do, whether it be in the arts or not. I'm reminded every time that I walk into the choir room that there's more to high school than just grades or even more to life than just success. Mr. Teeters reminds me to take time to do the things I love. Musical theater has always been a passion of mine. Even though our production of West Side Story was cut short in 2020, I loved every minute of it. I am beyond ecstatic to be preparing for Mamma Mia and I can't imagine anyone else besides Mr. Teeters being a part of the experience. His knowledge and love for music is something that he passes on to all of his students. He makes me look forward to school every day. Mr. Teeters will forever have an impact on my life and I am so grateful for the many lessons and experiences he has given me. I want to thank him for helping me throughout these years to become a better musician and a better person. I met Ms. Watkins when I was in eighth grade. I remember her talking to me, a scared little middle schooler from a small class of 23 kids, as if she'd already known me for years. Ms. Watkins truly gets to know all of her students. I always felt important and valued in her eyes. Even though she switched my first and middle name for the first month of high school, I am so grateful for the relationship we have developed. I can't imagine my high school experience without Ms. Watkins and I am eternally grateful for everything that she has done for me these past four years. She has been a support for me throughout school and upcoming college apps, but also through many difficulties I encountered these last couple of years. Ms. Watkins has influenced me by reminding me to take time for myself, but to also be my version of my best self, not one that others have created for me. I don't think I'd be where I am today if I hadn't been lucky enough to have Ms. Watkins as my counselor. Ms. Watkins, I will forever remember your love and passion for helping students and I look forward to catching you up with you in the future wherever I may be. Thank you to Mr. Merkner, Mr. Teeters, Ms. Watkins and Mrs. O'Connor for all that you have done for me. And thank you to all these and all of you for enabling me to speak here this evening to express my gratitude towards these amazing people. Go crushers. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ella.
Thank you, Principal O'Connor and to our Students of the Month for Vintage High School and to Principal Miller for New Tech High. Again, congratulations. And thank you for making a smile underneath our masks. Okay, we now go into our public comments on non agenda items. Members of the audience may address the board on any school related matter that is not on the agenda. The board will not take action on any issue raised during this section of the agenda inasmuch as board action is limited to posted agenda items. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes. If I ask for any public comment, I'm going to ask Tristie Garcia to please read the public comments received on non agenda items.
Yes. The following public comment was received by electronic email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 AM this morning. The written format has been forwarded and reviewed by the NVSD Board of Education Trustees. The comment was submitted by Izzy Wizzy. The title was check in important and it was received on September 21st, 2021. And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Tristie Garcia. Now I will ask Mr. Bassinet, if we have any public comment on non agenda items, we can have the first speaker.
We do have public comment. First person will be Justin Hamilton Hall.
Hello, everybody. This is, this is Justin Hall. I'm just gonna tell you that I see a war from Napa Corners, Napa Corners. Give me a black, a black war or coin of the year, 2020, 21 of year. Is that doing very hard bill playground? Tap key club and, and be, be kind for all of our board members. Other thing I want to see if, if you guys can get snow school and see if we can put the black name, a plaque on my name like Justin Hall in 1997, 2021. So memory my old school, I read no school. And the third one is I'm a very pal is our stupid, stupid tennis. Welcome back. I pray you and good night, everybody.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Francine Cannetl.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, Napa School Board. First, I'm wondering why your meetings are still being held via Zoom. I'm sure you will reply because of a new COVID variant. If this is the case, why are hundreds, if not thousands of people free to come to Napa every single weekend and crowd into restaurants, wineries and hotels? Did we not just have Bottle Rock where thousands of people converged in very close knit setting? So if the COVID doesn't attack these people in these settings, but in a school board meeting it does? Again, please explain why you are not having in-person meetings. Second, I heard that the district is considering some very interesting protocols regarding sports. Please correct me if I am wrong, but I heard that if an athlete vaxxed or unvaxxed comes down with COVID, that the entire team will suffer the consequences. It is rumored that the unvaxxed will have to get vaxxed in order to play if this happens. Now, if you are telling us that a vaxxed student can still get COVID, then you're admitting that the vaccines do not work, correct? If they did work, then the students that are vaxxed would never come down with the COVID. So if you admit that students can still get COVID, even if they are vaxxed, why would you even consider making vaccines mandatory for students? I mean, if you are suggesting that they don't work, please explain this to me because where I am coming from, this makes no sense whatsoever. And lastly, please explain why you are even considering children being vaccinated. As of September 16th, the CDC reports that among the 45 states reporting 0.00% to 0.03% of all children with COVID resulted in death. Let me repeat that. 0.00% to 0.03% of all children with COVID resulted in death. You mandating vaccines for a virus that literally has a 0% risk of death to children is criminal, despicable and completely uncalled for. We plan on fighting this madness until this absurd discussion has completely disappeared. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is Jeanette. Go ahead, Jeanette.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Bailey. Thank you for your time and for your dedication to our children. I do have three children myself, 11, five and three, almost four. And I'm calling today to let you know that I strongly oppose of these mask mandates on our children. I feel like there's a lot of us here in Napa who strongly oppose of these mask mandates for our children. Bottom line is myself and others believe that it should be the choice of the parents and the child to choose if they want to wear a mask or not. And we're also not stupid. We know that the masks are kept on our children because vaccines will replace them next and those will be mandated and we're already seeing it in other counties. And there's a lot of really scared parents, parents who can't pull their kids out of school and who have to have, who both parents have to work. And so you're putting families and a lot of families in really unfortunate and really hard positions. So it starts with the masks. I believe it starts with the masks. If we can do away with the mask mandates, I believe that Napa Valley has a chance at something really beautiful at a, we can be an inclusive county. And another thing is I, you know, to make the case that Napa is getting it right, that Napa Valley Unified District, like we're the ones getting it right, we're getting COVID right, would also make the case that so many other counties and states are getting it wrong. But that just is not true. The other counties and states, there's so many, most do not have these mask mandates and they are thriving. So we can't make the case that Napa is getting it right. We have the data, we have the science. We actually have, there's a new study that just came out of Bangladesh on cloth masks and their efficacy. And essentially they don't work, not essentially, they don't work. So and we know that kids aren't dying of COVID. We are just begging you and, and telling you that we want our children unmasked. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Maria Cantara.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I am a mother of three and an elementary, middle school and high school student here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. And I appreciate the fact that you guys are including mask mandates for children with the numbers on the rise. Hopefully they're coming down, but looking at the numbers that you publish on your website, they are going up and if we take masks away, they're going to continue to go up at a huge rate. And even though it says that the spread is not in the schools, just one positive student who gets it in the school is bringing it home to their family and spreading it to that whole family. And so for me, that would be one of my students then spreading it to the elementary school or the high school or the middle school, whichever ones the other ones didn't attend. So I do appreciate the fact that we do have the mask mandate someplace. I look at the numbers every week and I'd appreciate to see the numbers broken down by school. Right now we're just broken down by district, but I looked at the websites of other school districts in our area, both Solano and Napa County, and they break it down by site. And I think that would be a little bit more open to everyone to see what's going on and get a real picture of what's happening in the Napa Valley. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Suzanne Bell. Go ahead, Ms. Bell.
We still can't hear her.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Susan Bell and I gave seven years of hard work and dedication serving as an IA with Napa Unified. Towards the end of last year, intrusive health questions and personal questions came my way as well as a doxing from coworkers at Willow Elementary who believed that they should be telling me about wearing masks outdoors when I couldn't breathe. Then the pending vaccine mandate loomed, leaving little recourse for those not wishing to be vaccinated. I left the job I loved, but now have freedom from a very oppressive atmosphere at the school and within the district. Here are my questions. Do you have specific data and statistics on how many students at Napa Valley Unified has suffered a severe case of COVID or have died from COVID? And have you done a study on the detriments of wearing a mask at school? And the ill effects on, on student health as well as the detriment to effective and efficient learning? When do you plan on ending this meritless mask mandate and forced vaccines? And when will you let parents make their own decisions as it should be as far as their children's healthcare choices? And lastly, I concur with Francine that when will you stop hiding behind the guise of Zoom and meet with us face to face so we can discuss these topics and others as concerned residents and you as the board who's supposed to be watching over the education and well being of our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sylvia Regaldo. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, President Gonzalez-Matas, Superintendent Dr. Masetti and members of the Trust Board of Trustees. My name is Sylvia Regalado Zachlaud. I am a parent of two elementary age schoolchildren and a middle schooler here in the city of American Canyon. And I'm back tonight to just share with you, one, my appreciation for the steps that you have taken to keep our kids safe, especially the children that yet do not have the option to receive a vaccination if that is what is best for their families. However, I think we're still falling short on some of the systems in place. We had from our middle school, a notice of potential exposure to COVID. And as a parent who has been taking a lot of precautions as a family who has had extended family members sick and have died from the COVID, this is something that we take very, very seriously, not only for ourselves, but all of the people that we encounter. And my first thought was if our middle schooler is exposed, what does that mean for our younger children and the children and their families that are exposed at the middle school, at the elementary school level? I think we need to relook again at the way in which the process of exposure notice and kind of what the advice is to families like mine who really want to continue to take care of their community and take care of the kids within that community to ensure that we can all pull out of this pandemic as safely as possible and as soon as possible. And I also want to express my appreciation for the school staff who are put between a rock and a hard place when they are trying to do the best that they possibly can to protect and maintain all of the health and safety of the kids that are entrusted to them every single day. And they have no other choice but to follow whatever rules are put forth. I think as a community, we still need to come together and figure out how we can work around these protocols so that we can ensure that all families and all children, until they're given the option to take additional measures are safe. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is Karina. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm the mother of two here in Napa. I'm calling in to state that I strongly oppose the mask mandates. I strongly believe that those decisions should be left up to the parents to make and not to the district. I'd like for someone to explain to me how it works or in quotations protect students when they're masked all day at their desks, but yet for lunch and recess, they can sit next to each other. I've seen children hugging, kissing without a mask, but yet you guys want our children to remain masked inside the classroom. I've also seen firsthand teachers unmasked both during and after class. So something to keep that into consideration. I'm terrified to think that next vaccines will be mandated for our children. It terrifies me to think that we will be put in a rock and a hard spot whether to keep our children in school or just pull them out from the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Mears. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Michelle Mears. I'm just calling because I can't believe you guys are going to put masks on these kids. This is abuse. It is unnecessary. It's inappropriate. It's not your job. You're not keeping anybody safe. Those little pieces of paper that you put over their masks and you're wearing on your faces right now do nothing. They do nothing to stop a virus and you all know that. And I'm disgusted. And if I had a kid in that school, I'd pull them out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Next speaker is the attendee with the phone number 624-5605. Go ahead. You'll need to unmute yourself, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, oh, hi. Uh, my name is Norma Ortiz and um I would please request that these meetings continue to be offered via Zoom to promote further community and parent engagement and participation. As previously requested, that we get updates related to COVID-19 cases at schools with numbers. And details on how these particular incidents have or are being resolved to avoid the risk of further exposure with other children. In addition, I would like to make emphasis on requesting that the Napa Valley Unified School District English um learner roadmap affirms the rights of English learners and invites welcome the community, families, stakeholders, and even students to take control over their own learning with collaboration. Guided by a roadmap that sets policies and forms of implementation which allows students in the category of English language learners to have their educational rights recognized in regards to their academic needs, goals, supports, and services. This is a great way to encourage parent engagement across school districts. It is also an important pathway to promote cultural diversity and access to opportunities to help students thrive. For the purpose of educating all of its members so we can all contribute as much as possible. It is important that we all stand together to support all of our students, considering that our children who are future leaders deserve quality and education. Implementing an effective ELL roadmap supports student success by possibly decreasing high school dropouts and increasing student success. So students can achieve a career of their choice. Following this conversation, these are some questions that I would like to get information from our district. What system has the district developed to make sure English learners have access to the full curriculum, including high-quality learning opportunities and English language development courses? In general, what programs or pathways are offered to help English learners become bilingual and belligerent? How can we uh increase those options in the future? How is our school or district truly working with parents and families of English learners beyond what is required by state and federal law? In what ways is the English learner roadmap reflected in our LCAP? How are we using the California Department of Education crosswalk between the English learner roadmap and LCAP state priorities to help us do this? How are we using L um LCFF dollars to increase and improve services for English learners? Especially those in most needs and with documented regression. Based on identified strengths and areas of growth, are there particular um roadmap roadmap principles the district or school is choosing to focus on first? In what ways do the school and district support administrators and teachers for serving English learners? So that they can access resources such as bilingual?
Mister, thank you for your comment. Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is uh with the phone number six two three seven three three three. Go ahead. You'll need to unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to call in and participate. And thank you for offering people continuing to offer people um the options of Zoom to participate. As a life of a veteran teacher who's been teaching for over thirty years, I want to say thank you to Napa Valley Unified School District. For following defiance and having the strength and compassion to do what's right to protect all the lives of everyone who works together to create a healthy community of educated young people. It's very important that people try not to speak with hostility to the district. I'm disappointed to hear some people speaking in almost threatening tones. That's highly inappropriate. The people working on this board and people working in the school district are doing their very best to deal with a very difficult global situation. So again, I'd like to thank the district for what they're trying to do to take care of everyone, protecting faculty, staff, and all the children and the greater community. People need to understand too that the mask requirements also do help protect people from the normal flu being spread. We've had a very minimal spreading of flu in the United States since people started wearing masks. Flu kills normally previous to mask wearing up to thirty thousand people a year in our country. And also it's cut down dramatically on issues of uh people getting sick with colds in the workplaces. And we'll do the same with schools with children. Um, they used to call it kitty cred when my husband was first starting out teacher as a teacher. It's the common understanding between teachers that everybody gets sick with flus and colds frequently. This will help with that and have more children be able to attend. Also, I'd like to encourage the district and say thank you for offering opportunities for people to attend distance. Um, with global global climate crisis, it's very important to understand that the old days of people just copping in their cars and driving everywhere has to be something in the past. We need to be responsible and use remote wisely in ways that support the the global health and our local health of our our own community, which means clean your ear. Thank you so much, Napa Valley Unified School District. I think you're doing a wonderful job. And I continue to um hope that you get more support for the choices that you're making to protect everybody and create a very positive education experience for lovely young people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is Lindsay Kling. Go ahead, you can talk.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Awesome. So uh, what I have to say is our children are resilient. Um, not against technology, not against staying inside uh because we're afraid of climate change and viruses. My daughter in twenty eighteen, I guess we all have forgotten about the strep and the flu that went through our town and our state and our country like freaking wildfire. She had strep B, cat scratch fever, and Epstein-Barr all at the same time. Guess what? She didn't die because she's healthy. This week, she had to be tested for COVID because her asthmatic response, because she does have asthma, to wearing a mask in school for the last three weeks has been so insane that she cannot stop coughing some days for longer than five minutes. Her doctor, she was tested for COVID, she didn't have it. Her doctor said, well, it's probably because she can't get a full breath with a mask on her face. So she recommended that she be on Singular and Flow Vent, which is a steroid inhaler, plus a regular inhaler, which she already is on. So my daughter, who is healthy, should wear a mask and take medication so she can sit in a class six feet away from each other indoors to learn, then go outside to take her mask off and play on a playset with other people who are not socially distancing, eat with other kids. I'm what I'm trying to say to you all is that viruses are gonna spread and they're gonna continue to spread. It's not gonna end. The idea that COVID is gonna stop is not real. Actually, it's gonna continue if you keep vaccinating because the virus is gonna keep morphing, growing, and becoming not attainable. To, you know, you're not gonna be able to stop it. These children who have the opportunity, who are super strong, healthy, have the have a greater chance to be struck by lightning than to die from this disease or this virus. They have the opportunity to gain natural immunity. So I'm here to say Oakland, they they did the vax mandates for twelve and over. We disagree. I disagree with that. Don't you dare start that in our town. You've got hundreds of parents who will pull their children from your district right away and shame on you. And you know what? I'm not speaking on a threatening tone. I'm protecting my children. Mama bear all day long. The masks need to stop. They don't work. Do actual research. Turn off CNN. This is not going away. We are prepared to do whatever it takes to advocate for our children till the end, all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is uh the attendee with the initials TG. Go ahead.
Um, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking uh during this open session. I was actually listening for a different topic altogether, but I felt compelled to say something. I want to say thank you to the Napa Valley Unified School District for keeping our children safe. I want to say that I support you continuing to have these meetings by Zoom. I support the mask mandate. I won't comment on vaccines because I think that is a personal choice, but I'm sorry that you have to listen to parents who turn their anger into vitriol and animosity. And I just want to say thank you for keeping our children safe. I know you all are in a between a rock and a hard place like another parent mentioned. And I just want to say thank you. And I'm sorry that you have to deal with animosity. So thank you for all your hard work. That's all.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is David. Go ahead.
Hi, um, my name's David and I have a child in the school district here, fourth grade. And I'd like to uh speak out uh in support of those who are I hear on this uh phone call um on this Zoom meeting. Who are against the mandated masks for children in our schools. And I think it's incredible to see more and more support for this because it is the right thing to do. Is the ethical, moral thing to do. It is actually the intelligent, logically consistent, rational, science-based thing to do. We have forgotten what it means to be human beings. Uh, we have um completely forfeited uh our own decision-making. And we are losing track of what it means to make policy decisions that are informed by the process that is science. Science is not an institution. Science is not an individual. Okay, science is a process. And children are not main vectors of transmission. Children are not in any serious risk of any consequence or repercussion from this virus at all. And you don't have data to support mandating that you mask children when people have the option and the choice to wear a mask or to mask their child. And everyone in this community has the option and the choice to get a vaccine. And from what I've been told, the vaccines work, and I think that's great. I'm all for getting a vaccine if you want. I'm for vaccine choice, of course. And it doesn't seem to me that there's any kind of reason to be masking our children while they're sitting indoors next to each other at desks. When down the street, people are sitting next to each other, at least as close, if not closer, with their masks off, eating, drinking wine, laughing it up. It's gross. It's illogical. And in order to hold the position that you're holding, you have to completely sacrifice all intellectual integrity. Okay, what you're doing right now is not brave. It is not helping our children. It is actually hurting our children. And you're embodying what it looks like to be a hypocrite and a coward. And that is not what leadership is. Do better because you have to do better. It is, there's no excuse, no excuse whatsoever, and I am ashamed of you. You got kids at Pueblo Vista Elementary where my son goes trying to learn Spanish who are not Spanish speakers. Who are English speakers trying to learn Spanish, young kids, and their teachers are speaking to them and they can't see their mouth moving. They can't see the enunciation and articulation of the words as they're trying to learn a different language. Have you forgotten what childhood development is? Have you forgotten how child children process trauma? How about mental health, about brain development? It is, there's no excuse. You are not good people for what you're doing, and you should not be applauded. We are watching.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
Next speaker is Jackie Roars. Go ahead with your comment.
Hi, good evening. I am so we have four kids, uh, two have already graduated from Napa Valley Unified. Um, one of them graduated last year. The end of her junior year was completely ruined. Her senior year was um it it beyond disgusted me what Napa Valley Unified School District put her through. We also have one in middle school and we have one that is yet to enter. And she will not be entering. We will not enroll her um if these sorts of things continue to happen. Um, I just want people to think about um like how how are these desks different than a restaurant table if any one of you with your friends, with your family? You're a hypocrite. You know, I hope I never see any of you out at a restaurant because you're a hypocrite if you were going to a restaurant. Um, I also want to say that um I guess I just, you know, is it possible that we're doing more harm than good? Is it possible that you don't know what long-term effects putting masks on these kids is doing? I have a family member who is a counselor in the school district. And they tell me repeatedly that the level of anxiety in these kids is something they have never witnessed before in their career. And that breaks my heart. And my kids, well, they sit there and my nephew was, I was talking to him yesterday. He's in first grade. Telling me how he doesn't like school because he doesn't like to wear the mask. And I asked him if he had to wear it all the time. And he said, well, all the time when I'm in the classroom. But when we go out inside and play, I can take it off. So you're telling me, well, these kids are exerting themselves when they're breathing the breathing the heaviest, when they're next to their friends, when they're eating lunch. That's when they're unmasked? This doesn't make sense. And we are, I believe in my heart that we are causing more harm than good, and we have yet to see the long-term effects of it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, Mr. Bassinet.
There's no more further comment for non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you. We will now go into reports. So item H1, which is Board of Education Institute Board Representative. Who would like to start? Traditionally, we have um trustee grass here and he kicks it off. Would you like to start, trustee grass?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So I attended the Napa High School football home opener at Memorial Stadium, both JV and Varsity uh lost to Rodriguez High School. Uh, I reviewed some of the videos on the thirteenth for back to school night at Ben H High. Uh, on the fourteenth, I attended the Silverado Middle School Parent Club Meeting. Also, on the fourteenth, I caught the last half of the renaming committee meeting. On the fifteenth, I attended the curriculum meeting. On the sixteenth, I visited McPherson Elementary School and had a really great visit. I was welcomed by Principal Troy Knox and some of the students in the leadership class. I traveled around the campus and saw each of the various grades K through five in action. I heard how our new fencing was instrumental in keeping unwanted people off the campus and saw the new finishing kitchen just after a successfully completed breakfast service. I looked, it looked like McPherson Elementary is adjusting well to the return of students back to campus this year. In speaking with Principal Knox, he explained this year they have a campus-wide emphasis on English language acquisition and improvement. As part of that emphasis, they are working hard to get students talking in each class. These efforts were borne out by my observations as I visited a fourth-grade classroom that was working hard on a number corner exercise, which was connected with their calendar. The teacher was really fostering discussion around the unusual symbols being used to represent the numbers. You could really see the kids thinking, talking, and learning. I was also pleased to hear that they are utilizing a few full-length books in the upper grades. In fact, due to our shortage of substitute teachers, Matt Manning was on campus helping to fill in during my visit by substituting for a teacher who was absent. I chatted with him a bit during recess and he explained that he got to read a chapter of Charlotte's Web with the students and had them doing some creative writing. Overall, it was a great visit to McPherson Elementary School. Thank you, Principal Knox, and your leadership students for hosting my visit. On the sixteenth, I attended the Vintage High School football game at Memorial Stadium. It was the freshman uh game and the crushers were defeated eighteen oh. And then And then on the 21st, I attended the FNT meeting. And that concludes my.
Thank you, trustee Gracia.
I did not go to any football games, but I did attend a CSBA webinar. It addressed the challenging governance landscape across the state, specifically COVID mitigation strategies, independent studies, learning recovery, and debates on topics such as ethnic studies and CRT. The discussion was centered on best practice and governance standards during difficult times. I am very proud to report that we already had every single protocol in place. I can assure you that is not the case in all districts. It was informative as well as validating in ways that I did not anticipate. I also attended the UCSF Collaborative to advise on reopening education safety. The webinar was presented on the 7th of September, but I was able to review it this week. I went to the DACA Youth Event, You Make the Road by Walking. It was a truly humbling and inspiring event. Napa High students founded an internship program through On the Move, and they committed themselves to helping 100, primarily young people, apply for their deferred action for childhood arrivals. Stories, quotes, and a beautiful mural were shared to give visual presence and voice to every story and every person. Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings attended, as did Maran, and it was really nice to see her. Eve attended as well, and we were both moved by the quotes. The monumental impact that a few words could have. She will share more on that in her report. I attended the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. The committee shared potential names for the new dual immersion school and the inspiration and thought process behind them. Trustee Riser, trustee Chu, and I visited Pueblo Vista Elementary along with NVLA. There is a great deal of programmatic pride at each school. Every wall was a learning wall, both in English and Spanish. I loved speaking with the students and they would seamlessly move between both languages. I loved the consistency in the classrooms, from the number corner, as David just referenced, to the toolbox, to learning objectives defined in every classroom. We observed numerous kindergarten classes, four adults entering a room, one of the adults very familiar to the children, and they stayed engaged, eyes on their teachers, completely focused on the task at hand. When you spend time in a classroom, it is easy to be humbled by great teachers. I attended the faculties, the facilities and technology meeting, which trustee Dooley will report out on. And I attended the Virtual Author Event with Dr. Emma Sepala. Did I pronounce that correctly? She, Sepala, she discussed her research, its impact on our happiness and inner peace. She discussed the path that everyone can explore to find that happiness track, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And lastly, last evening, attended the CSBA Region Three Membership Meeting and Legislative Update. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Jankowicz. Trustee Riser?
Yes, thank you. Let's see, on September 14th, I participated in the meeting with the City of American Canyon. We call it the Two by Two, and trustee Chu will be reporting out soon about that meeting. I also, on that day, started watching the virtual back-to-school night videos for my own two daughters who attend Napa High. I just, I know it's necessitated by COVID, but I was really impressed with the way the teachers were able to, you know, convey the critical information. I missed being in person, of course, and getting to meet my children's teachers, but I just am impressed with the way the NVUSD staff has responded to our constraints and still successfully engaged parents and, you know, given us a sense of who they are and a face to go with the name, of course. On September 15th, along with trustee Jankowicz, I attended the Valley Youth for DACA's event called We Make the Road by Walking. She did a wonderful job summarizing the the goal and the purpose and the foundation of that project. It was just so moving. And I really wish it's an experience that everyone in our community could have, and I'm hopeful that we can find ways to encourage these amazing motivated students and the faculty that are supporting them to bring that show on the road because it just deepens understanding. I'm a huge believer in the power of story. And if you hear details from somebody's story, it's a lot harder to make a generalization or an across-the-board judgment. It's just very moving to learn and more about the real, the authentic experiences of our community members who are walking this really difficult road of having an undocumented immigration status. So just to conclude that piece, I am just going to read a few of the quotes that were displayed. They were printed out and posted on these wooden frames so that you could really kind of walk, it was outside, so COVID safe, and we were all masked as well, but to sort of walk through at your own leisure and so a few of the quotes that really gave me goosebumps. There was one that was right at the entrance that said, and to be clear, these were taken from interviews that the students did with community members who have, who are undocumented and have gone through this process. So there was one at the beginning that what was obviously from a student or seemed like from one of the students that said, "I built lies and made excuses so my friends wouldn't know." Another one, "My parents wanted to give me a good life, and now that I'm a mom, I understand how it is to want everything for your child." There was one that said, "I wasn't 100% sure that we would all be together." One that just brought tears to my eyes. They said they could only take my baby. I would cross later. I had no choice. Two more. There's one that said, "My aunt told me I would never go to college because I didn't have a social security number. I was crushed." And then on that same theme, the last one I'll share. "I believed I could achieve anything until I found out I had limitations due to being undocumented." So that's just a taste of what was shared, and I'm just so grateful to Napa Valley Youth for DACA for bringing this to light and sharing it with their community because I believe that this is a key to increased understanding and increased empathy. And I'm grateful. On September 14th, I attended the Citizens Advisory Committee, or I listened into. That's the same one, trustee Jankowicz mentioned, that's convened to consider possible names for the Middle School Language Academy. So that was very exciting and just, it's a very, it's a process with a lot of integrity, and I'm really appreciative that we involve the community in that way. And it was great to hear their involvement, and I'm grateful to them for their commitment to our community in this way. On September 15th, I attended the Curriculum and Student Support Board Advisory Committee. I'm not going to be reporting out this time. I think I went way too long on my committee report last time. I'll probably never do it again. But trustee Water Gracia will be reporting about that later. On September 19th, oh, I wanted to give a shout out on the back-to-school night to Napa High Choir Director Duncan Cooper, who did his in-person outside in the quad. He called it Back to Choir Night, and it had all the information that we choir parents needed, but also live music, which was a nice bonus. And then on September 19th, this past Sunday, also outdoors in the Napa High Quad, I attended the Singing in the Spotlight, which is part choir concert and part individual talent show kind of thing. And I'm just blown away by the talent of our students and the joy of coming together in community to share in their performance and to listen to live music was amazing. So again, hats off to David Wayne and Duncan Cooper, who make that happen for our Napa High Choir kids. On September 20th, I, along with trustee Jankowicz and Chu, did two wonderful site visits to Pueblo Vista and Napa Valley Language Academy. Many thanks to principals Roca and Uribe. I will just be brief and say it was just amazing to see the students and teachers in action, engaged in both languages. I second what trustee Jankowicz said, the consistency from classroom to classroom was amazing, the engagement, the high quality of instruction happening. And I love site visits because you get little nuggets of insight and information that aren't necessarily in reports. And the one that really stuck with me that we all got a kick out of was in the kindergarten level, the percentage is 90% Spanish, 10% English. And the strategy that they use is when they're delivering the 10% English oral language instruction, the teachers switch because they don't want the kindergarten kids to know that their teacher speaks English because then otherwise the English-speaking students, the native English speakers, might be constantly trying to switch. And so they flip-flop and do this little trade-off. And then Principal Uribe pointed out to us that there, she had NVLA grads come back as seniors, or there was some event in which they were blown away to learn that their teachers were English speakers. They'd never heard them speak English before.
That's funny.
So that's amazing commitment to the model and just, I just love that little gem of problem-solving and teamwork. And then lastly, last night, I was unable to attend the CSBA Regional Zoom because I chose instead to do a really powerful training that was offered by Mentis here in Napa. It's called the QPR Suicide Prevention Training. And it takes 90 minutes to get trained in what's called being a gatekeeper. And that means that you have been trained on how to recognize the signs that somebody may be in crisis. You're trained to ask the question. So the PQR, I'm sorry, it's not PQR, it's a QPR is sort of, they make a parallel to CPR, you know, CPR is life-saving heart procedure that you can be trained in, and then that can really, you know, save lives. So QPR is the sort of mental health equivalent of getting that training. Q means, you know, learning to, or feeling empowered and knowing that it's appropriate to ask the question if you see somebody, to ask them if they're considering killing themselves. And I just want to put out there because I have this platform. It is a myth that if you ask somebody if they're contemplating killing themselves, that you will plant the seed in their mind. You are not going to encourage somebody to ponder suicide by asking them if they are thinking about killing themselves. So that's a huge takeaway, I think, everyone needs to know. And then one other piece of data that really blew me away, we only have the data, or I think the public health data is only available up to 2018. But from 2000 to 2018, there were 263 suicides in Napa County, which averages out to one suicide every 25 days. So that one was a real gut punch, but it's a reality that I think as a community we need to face. And so I just want to thank Jenny Olson and Stevie Dalby, who were the two co-presenters, the prevention specialists. Jenny's the prevention director at Mentis. And she wanted me to let everybody in the community know that they are available to offer these trainings. If you just reach out and ask them, they tend to do it. If you have a group that you would like to have trained, they'll, they'll come. You know, they're not necessarily just going out and taking it on the road. But if you have a club or an organization, or you work for a company and you'd be willing to allow your employees 90 minutes to get this training. You know, they said it takes, you have to train hundreds of people to save one life. You have to train thousands of people to save hundreds of lives. And we have to train millions of people to save thousands of lives, and it's 90 minutes of your time, and it's invaluable. So I hope you'll consider that. Oh, and my last thing is that I did hear from Jenny Olson that 60 or more of our NVUSD employees had a chance to get, receive this QPR training last year. And I hope that we will be able to offer that to more cohorts of our employees in the district. Oh, and one more thing I learned on this topic, sorry, is that I didn't know that Napa County has its own 24-hour crisis line for mental health crisis. It's 707-253-4711. And there's 24-hour mental health crisis help available. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Riser. Trustee Water?
All right. Well, on September 15th, I was at the curriculum meeting and with two of my colleagues, and I'll report later on. Let's see, on September 20th, I just, on my own, went over to Carnero School and, you know, hung out and watched somebody from the NVUSD with a truck drive in, go on the premises. I took some pictures. And it was a beautiful, clear day, and I noticed their organic gardening sign that I hope we can save and preserve and give to the new school. They were certified California organic farmers. And, you know, I was just thinking, it's been a school for a long time and it's, you know, quite poignant that it suffered so much damage. And, you know, we had to relocate it. And then that night, hang on, I listened to the Virtual Author. Was that 9:20? Okay, gosh, it seems so long ago. Okay, the Virtual Author, Emma Sepala, and other people have described her, what she said very eloquently, but I will just tell our audience that breathe in four counts, breathe out six counts. I'm an asthmatic, and even I can do it, and it is a very calming exercise. And I won't say it, you know, puts me in the outer limits of happiness, but, you know, it does calm me down. And, okay, so then on 9:21, I took my sexual, anti-sexual harassment training, late, of course, but I did get 100% on the test, possibly because when I was 18 and worked at Bank of America, my first job, I experienced sexual harassment. So, you know, it was like, this was easy for me. It was fine. And that morning, I went over to Shearer School, and I really cannot recommend Shearer highly enough. First of all, when you appear, when you say you're coming, they'll put your name up on the electric lights. Welcome the trustees and lights. So there it was. And Brian Gardner's the principal, and, you know, he's a lot of fun. And we visited, we had a, you know, chat about, you know, where the school's going and the middle school pilot that they're doing. And then we toddled over to the sixth-grade class where trustee Gracia was thrilled to learn that they are reading full-length books. They have a, they do have, you know, this sort of anthology with a selection, but the teach, with a selection from the book Hatchet, but she thought would be a good book for the students to read. And they were doing it, and they were also learning math, and I enjoyed, I enjoyed my visit there. And then last night, I attended my first CSBA regional meeting, and it was really interesting. I'd never done it before. And I, you know, saw a lot of my colleagues, including somebody out of my past from 30 years ago, is on the on the school board, and so we're going to go have lunch together, you know, do a little, you know, network building. But it was a lot of fun hearing what our, what our neighbors, our colleagues' experiences have been, you know, during the pandemic, you know, what they've done and comments on legislation that's coming up. It was, you know, I enjoyed it. It was, it was great fun. And so I'm glad I went, and I'll go to the next one. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Water. Trustee Chu?
So on September 14th, I attended the city, the meeting with City of American Canyon, along with trustee Riser, which I'll report off out later. I also listened in on the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting about the renaming of the Middle School Language Academy. Looking forward to that. On September 20th, along with trustees Riser and Jankowicz, I visited Pueblo Vista and NVLA. I don't know if I shared this with the other trustees, but one of the stories I got from one of the kids when I asked, what's the best thing about being, you know, knowing Spanish fluently? And he said that he was a soccer player. And when he plays, when their team plays another team that he knew did not speak Spanish, they would make plays and plan in Spanish, and they would be able to execute on those plays. So you know what? That is a wonderful way of translating your knowledge from the classroom. So
Concrete. Yay.
Yay for applied. Yay for applied knowledge. And thank you, Principals Roca and Uribe for hosting us. On and that night I also listened in on the authors night with Emma Sepala. I also took away the whole breathing exercise and I realized my son was ahead of me because he was doing that. So I was really, you know, impressed that that she was able to give little nuggets of advice. You know, to to kind of get us all grounded. And on the twenty first, I actually listened in on the City of American Canyon's council meeting. Where I heard our student representative Emily Bitt give her presentation with her Napa Schools for Climate Change. So yay for anytime we can see our students shine in other settings. And then on the twenty second, I also attended the CSBA Region Three meeting about policy updates. And today, right before this meeting, I listened in on the Canyon Oaks School Site Council meeting, just to thank them for their service and to listen in on on their process. And that's it.
Thank you, Trustee Chu. Trustee Dooley?
Yes, so I too, on the fourteenth, listened in on the Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. I they're doing a great job navigating, you know, the the concepts that that go into deciding or recommending a name for a new school. So it's interesting to see. That same night was also the River Back to School Night. There was a live video from Principal Kathy Adams and Assistant Principal Stefan Schaefer. And then the teachers had a pre recorded videos for each of the classes. So I caught up on those later. On the seventeenth, I went to the American Canyon High School football game. They beat Livermore High School. It it felt like a fall evening. It was really cold. My son and I went and it it was it was great. I'm we're actually going to go tomorrow to Petaluma. We're going to be road warriors and watch Vintage High play my alma mater at Casa Grande High School. So that'll be kind of a weird thing. On the twentieth, I also watched the virtual author event. You know, the breathing was great. There was also a lot of a lot of discussion that reminded me of my college philosophy courses. About, you know, the the pursuit of philosophy from the beginning has been how do we find happiness and what does happiness mean? And and then there was a period where it was like the opposite of happiness. But in any event, philosophy has always been about happiness and this was a great chance to hear from a very qualified and articulate thinker in this area and and in practical manner too. So it wasn't all, you know, philosophy stuff. But and then on the twenty first, I attended the Facilities and Technology Committee meeting, which I'll be reporting on shortly. And that's that's my report.
Thank you, everybody, for your report. Our student board rep, Emily, did you want to have an update?
So for me this week or this board meeting, it's pretty brief. So on September fourteenth, I was interested in seeing some of like the other district committees, but I wasn't able to catch the live Citizen Advisory Committee meeting. So I watched the recording of the session. I wasn't able to watch the entire meeting, but I did find it really interesting to see like the discussion between Ms. Andrew Jennings and the rest of the members. And then as Trustee Chu mentioned, on September twenty first, I was given the opportunity to give a presentation to the American Canyon City Council on behalf of Napa Schools for Climate Action. And really, we just touched on climate change and gas stations and other topics that fall under that category. But now we're working with the city planner to piece together like a potential call to climate action resolution that the city will adopt. I also just wanted to mention that I think that returning to in person school has been or in person instruction has been really interesting thus far. And as a student myself, I could think I can confidently say that this is a new setting and it's very different from the environment that we've been subjected to for like the past year and a half. So it's like only natural that many of us are going to take some time to adapt. And I do think that there have been some bumps in the road. Just like on my campus, seeing like serious fights and that devious lick trend that has been going around, that's been leading to like theft and vandalism. But I think that our teachers and admin and staff on all of the NVSD campuses just like really deserve a huge thank you, especially right now. Because seeing my campus administrations bring into action to try to find like remedies for these unique situations that just have like never happened before, has really made me thankful for the opportunity to be back on campus in this safer and modified way. And I just feel very thankful. I also went to the the football game for American Canyon on the seventeenth. I didn't get to see Trustee Dooley, but I did enjoy it. So yeah, that really that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll echo a lot of of the events we've participated. Many times I can't make it. And one of the things that I've appreciated so much is that I can go to the NVSD website and just watch the recording or listen to the recording while I finish my chores at home. It's quite amazing what you could do when you multitask and and it's been the only way I get to enjoy my outdoor patio because I'll have my headphones on and just chill there and and take note. I will say that September fifteenth through October fifteenth kicks off Latino Heritage Month. And so we have our own Napa Valley Latino Heritage Month. Events and calendars, I haven't seen it. Usually they're way ahead of what those events look like and they're calendar out. But again, due to COVID, it makes it quite challenging. And it sometimes just rolls over to the month of November with the Dia de los Muertos event that in many of our schools host a lot of these community events. But the the idea of that, I don't know. But I just hope that for our Latina families in our community and our NVSD, I'm sure they found themselves celebrating, especially on September sixteen, which was Mexico Independence Day, but also Independence Day for many Latino countries. And I found myself away from my family that day. And it turns out to also be the my husband's birthday, but I had a work event to be at. But it I could I had good friends around me to at least celebrate with me a little bit. And but lots of heritage, a lot of history. I think in the next one, I'm going to come back with some, just some authors' names. My dad's spending a week with me at home and it's been sort of a library of books to go over with him every day. Reminding me of my favorite books that I read in in Spanish, so you can also find them in English, but one of those exciting things when you're bilingual is that you can actually, you know, read that book in its original language and then and or do the vice versa. Sometimes I want to keep up with my Spanish and I read the entire Harry Potter in in Spanish, just to make sure I find something relaxing and fun and just practice my Spanish a little bit and it's in the Harry Potter world. And that's fun. So if you want to borrow it in practice, please, by all means, I have the entire thing in English and Spanish. Okay, we move on to our board representative reports, starting with Curriculum and Student Support Committee.
Mic was off. Okay, so that's me. We met on September fifteenth. It was a two hour meeting and he had four big subjects that I will skim over. We had our COVID nineteen response update. This was really an exhaustive report. And I would direct you to the COVID page. Information page, it's on our homepage. You can click to it. And you'll see everything you need to know about the district's pandemic response in English and Spanish. And it also includes it's a decision tree. Protocols with students who may have been exposed, including criteria for quarantine and the numbers of positive cases. Those are tracked, including and we know where they occurred. A standard quarantine is ten days. But with a negative test on day five, the person student can return to school on day seven. And there can be no extracurricular activities during quarantine. Tracking is time consuming and complex and we do reflex testing after a positive case. We're exploring options for testing at elementary sites. We will have more information on that later. We're looking at there are different models that we need to study and we will need parental consent. And we think the majority of parents will will go for it. We'll think it's a good idea. EL parents are very willing to have kids tested. Athletics is a driver because students want to be able to play. The biggest driver of all is parents want their children in school. Our vaccination clinics have been well received. We set up clinics in areas that were underserved. Anyone could get vaccinated. The second round will include flu shots and we're going to have them at Shearer, AC, American Canyon Middle School and Phillips. And we'll be setting up a testing shop for athletes. Teachers and students must wear masks indoors. And someone asked, one of the questions was maybe it was from you, what about cases with band and choir? We have very few incidents with them, but it is significant with athletes. As of two weeks ago, we had thirty percent of eligible students vaccinated. I'm interested in if numbers have gone up and we're really closing the gap on employees. And we talked about this for a long time. And I'd like to thank Monica Reddy, Matt Manning and our credential nurses. They've been working very, very hard on this. Okay, the TK twelve math update and, you know, we're going to be talking about this tonight in J one A. So I will let the math team tell us about it. And I just want to say that I am impressed with Kendall Parsons, a math teacher who is helping us with it. And you'll remember her. She's presented to us twice before. And and a math newsletter for secondary schools. It's part of the communications aspect of this enterprise and we're going to be paying lots of attention to fifth grade. This is the hinge, you know, this is the the link to secondary school and trustee Gracia thinks that the that the this communications tool, the newsletter that's, you know, they they showed it to us. It's, you know, somewhere here. He was very impressed and thinks we should have one for elementary too. And then middle school transition, two more days of community engagement, excited to work with stakeholder groups that include multilingual families. And trustee Gracia put in a plug for the value of specific programs. Okay, and then special ed, this was an add on to the big presentation we had in board session at the last meeting. More work was completed in instructional assistant staffing, organizational structure and due process and mediation. We had too many hyper specific job descriptions. We've gone from eleven classifications to four and they are para educator, instructional instructional assistant slash personal care, independence facilitator, adaptive technology. And our committee liked that the clerical staff has been cross trained. This is building competence and the goal is for due process and mediation to respond to a family within twenty four hours. And finally, the end what we're our aim is we want to work with our sped students and their families to build independence. And that's it. Is that enough? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Facilities and Technology Committee?
So the Facilities and Technology Committee met on the twenty first. And we had a shorter meeting. It was a very efficient meeting. Facilities and Technology reported on two items. One was a follow up report on the Division of State Architect legacy closeout process. We had reported on this a few months ago. And this is a process where unfinished or uncertified projects can be processed to make sure all the paperwork is in and that the Division of State Architects signs off on it. It's basically finaling the permit for projects. And we, like many other districts, have projects that weren't completely certified for whatever reason over the course of many years. And the facilities team has been working to address these projects, to prioritize them and to address urgent projects as we do various other facilities work around the district. The this involved the creation of a new tracking document that has identified fifty nine open projects in the from the district's paths that have not been certified. Forty three of them had have not been certified. And it's related to unpaid fees. There's not really a deficiency in the work. There were a few where there's research still in process. One of the difficulties is that these projects could be from decades ago and the inspectors of record who worked on the projects often when they worked on the projects were already late in their careers. And so thirty years passed, they may not be around anymore. So it's hard to locate information and from those sources. And then documentation over forty years is hard to identify. The prioritization, there's kind of two tracks that they use to prioritize. One is if we're we happen to be contact but contacted by the Division of State Architects. That raises a flag that, you know, the district needs to address a a legacy project. There's a new program at the state to try to reduce the backlog of these legacy projects statewide. And so they are starting to reach out to districts. The other area of prioritization is when we have an upcoming project at a campus. Oftentimes, it's necessary to either close out the project prior to that to the the upcoming project. Or incorporate any modifications that need to be made to to close out this legacy issue into the upcoming project plans. So those are kind of the two impetuses for addressing or prioritizing them. There's, you know, some weirdness in it. There are a few areas on on the tracking list with the state that relate to properties that are no longer, you know, district properties. That actually generally makes it easier. We can prove to the state that we don't have a facility at the Napa Valley Expo. That'll come off the list. There was one on the list that was a facility in a different district. So, you know, it just happened to be tracked incorrectly with the wrong number. And and then they had a legacy project for Salvador Elementary that somehow in the course of completely overhauling that campus to to be the the current River Campus. This one small project did not get caught and by either the DSA or the district. And so the process will involve kind of showing DSA what they've already certified with the the River School project to to try to resolve that one. And these can involve a lot of work or they can be relatively simple. It's just really depends on what the nature of the issue is. So the next report from facilities was on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And we discussed the 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 work that they did. You may recall back in June, we had their annual report where they presented the their review of the the bond work and one of their duties is to report on to to make an annual report. They also have a duty to inform the public about the district's expenditure and bond proceeds. They also have oversight and reviewing those expenditures so that no bond proceeds were used for inappropriate uses of teachers or administrative salaries or other operating expenses that are prohibited uses. So the over the Oversight Committee has really kind of formalized their process to to follow those three duties. Their meetings, they have six meetings a year. There's four regular meetings and then two additional meetings. that they've added to that. They have a process that, you know, is very similar to many bodies where they, they kind of prep the, the agenda with the, the, the committee chair. And then prior to that, staff puts in a lot of work to make sure that the agenda is, is meaningful and that the Oversight Committee can address, you know, what needs they have in order to fulfill those duties. Then the technology side, we had one presentation on the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is a federal program authorized by Congress under the American Rescue Plan. And it's intended to address the technology gaps for students that it's intended to provide devices and hotspots for people who don't have access to the internet or to devices in their homes. And this is different from our district's one-to-one device policy, which is largely for access to devices in schools. This is for person, for use at home when, when they're not using a, a school provided device. It's a grant program that the district has applied for. The, the, it can be used to purchase Wi-Fi hotspots, Chromebook devices and other connected devices for eligible persons who are defined as people who do not have access to those devices at home. It can, it's a reimbursement process. The Chromebooks, we can, will be reimbursed for up to a four hundred dollars per device. And for Wi-Fi hotspots, it's up to two hundred and fifty per device. This is usually much higher than the costs for, for those devices. So we're, we're reimbursed up to what we actually pay. We're not worried about not being fully reimbursed, in other words. There was a survey that went out to the district parents as part of the, I believe it was part of the data collection at the beginning of the year. And we received almost twelve thousand responses, eleven thousand, six hundred or so responses. And about seven thousand, three hundred students or parents indicated that students needed Chromebooks at home. And over six hundred families indicated that they were in need of hotspots to provide internet access. We, we've applied for a larger volume of, of devices. We would only get reimbursed for those that meet the needs of eligible students and families. So we, we should be hearing in the next couple of weeks whether we've been approved. We were on the, the forefront of the application process. So we're, we're hopeful that we, we should be receiving that information soon. And that's, that is my report from the committee.
Trustee Dooley, do you know, I don't recall, can families still apply? I know the survey went out. I know there was a cutoff date and that has since passed. But I know there was a little bit of dialogue on whether or not families could still apply. Rob, do you know if they can?
Tranquilla, yeah.
I'm sorry, yes, they can. We, we are continuing to, to reach out to families. So it, it's a survey. That, ultimately what will happen is we will, we will be provided with an award amount. And then in order to actually get reimbursed, we'll have to provide that data to U SAC to actually get reimbursed the money. So again, we, we will get an initial approval of the application like you do with E-Rate. Once we get the initial approval, we will need to use the survey data to actually distribute the devices to students, literally matching the, the survey data by student to the student that gets the device. And then we'd apply for reimbursement based on that.
Rob, is there a link to the survey for families still available?
I, that has been sent out to families. I have to double check on the location. I don't know the location off the top of my mind, off my head. So I'll, I'll check with Mr. Bassinet.
No worries.
Michael's about the location.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dooley. We've now reached our two-hour mark for us to take our little stretch and break. My back reminds me of that as well as trustee Gracia. So let's do that and then we'll return to our reports. So we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.
For letting us stretch our backs a bit.
Okay, we are back to our reports. But prior to that, we do know that we are kind of running a little later than expected. We do know we have our guests presenting, especially from our seven eleven committee. I want to suggest that they present after the consent agenda and before item J one A.
I move that we take item K one A out of order before item J one A. So what? So we can let our guests leave.
Thank you, trustee Dooley. So first by trustee Dooley, a second by trustee Gracia, student board rep.
I.
All those in favor?
I.
I oppose or abstain? Great, thank you. Okay, so we're now. We just did the facilitators and technologists committee report, so finance committee. We have not yet met since our last one. Policy committee?
We haven't met.
Special education?
Have not yet met.
City of American Canyon?
We did meet on the fourteenth of September, and it was a very productive and informative meeting. We received an update from the city about the various developments that are actually starting to break ground, including Watson's Ranch, Oath Hill, and some of the Broadway district specific plans are being up for their, for consideration. I think the most. I think we talk a lot about affordable housing and how expensive homes are here all across Napa County. And happy to report that they are going to be building almost two hundred affordable housing units in Watson's Ranch, and there is a plan to put in more than a hundred over at the Broadway district specific plan. So hopefully that will help people be able to live in this area. On the district side, we shared that the improvements that have been made at Donaldson Way Elementary School and also our future needs at that school. We postponed the new Napa Junction campus ribbon, ribbon cutting ceremony because of the Delta variant being somewhat rampant right now. We thought we couldn't do it justice, having a beautiful new school. We wanted the community to be there. So hopefully when things get a little bit more calm, we'll reschedule that. And I think the most productive thing that happened and what we heard about was the agreement over the waiving of the water connection fees at Napa Junction. So thank you to both district staff and city staff for working diligently on that in the last few weeks. I know it was very hard work trying to get all that information and, you know, a lot of that was history and maybe it was very hard to dig up. So, and we do have some ongoing outstanding things that they are working on, that the city and the district, including the memorandum of understanding for the joint use agreement for the community center and the gym at ACMS. The city and, well, the elected officials asked for this to be completed by December, and I think they're on track to do that. And a couple of other things, minor, I think we'll just continue our more frequent discussions, and it's been going well.
Thank you, trustee two. You're now going to the city of Napa. Town of Yountville. Okay. All right, let's take this to the superintendent and executive staff report.
Great, I'll try and be brief. I know we've had lengthy reports tonight, so I want to just start out continuously recognizing the Napa Valley Community Foundation. It continues to make donations towards specific programming here, and we always like to recognize their donations here at the public board meeting. So there's two donations that have come through in the last month. First, we have a grant in the amount of $2,000 from the Freed Family Fund. And this is a grant for making contribution towards the migrant education summer program. So thank you to the Napa Valley Community Foundation and the Freed Family Fund for that generous donation. And then a second donation, again, also from the Freed Family Fund. And these are ongoing supporters of our avid program, so I want to once again thank them. This is a $3,000 donation to strengthen the avid program, including using the contribution towards teacher training, registration fees, college tours, and parent engagement activities. So we want to thank them for their continuous support. I also want to echo what President Gonzalez-Mendez brought up. As your Latinx superintendent, I'm always very proud during Hispanic Heritage Month and celebrating the contributions of the many Latinx countries on the globe. And I appreciate that we take time to sort of carve out in this month, learning about those contributions and celebrating Hispanic heritage across the many, many countries that, you know, Hispanic heritage manifests within. And so in our social media feeds and in some of our internal communications to staff and external communications to our families and external stakeholder groups, we've put out some prompts around books that can be read around Hispanic Heritage Month and activities that you can engage young people in the community around and your children around in order to celebrate and honor the contributions of the Latinx community to our world. I also want to just quickly report out that on September the eighteenth, I had my first superintendent parent advisory committee. I was excited. We had twenty-two of our twenty-eight schools attending. It was a phenomenal meeting. We started out with just a connection and community act, activity, given that this was the first meeting, and we want to set the foundation for the collaborative work we'll do with the parent representatives the remainder of the year. Just a reminder for the board and the community, my executive team and I facilitate and lead these meetings. And the parents spent almost the first forty-five minutes just providing us with tons of positive feedback in the conocimiento connection activity, just so grateful for the Napa Valley Unified School District, for the teachers, the staff, the administrative teams at the school site, to our team, to the board. They are so grateful that their children are back at school. They feel like their children are safe, and they say that they are just, they were just filled with so much gratitude. I think it fueled my four assistant superintendents and myself for the rest of the week, because it was just really nice amidst some of this organized chaos as the pandemic conditions continue to persist and put pressure on the system, which I'll talk about momentarily. It was just great to hear twenty-two parent representatives say only positive things about the launch of school in this first month of school and how happy their children are. I also had the honor and pleasure today with my assistant superintendents of hosting our first superintendent teacher advisory. It was a mix of representatives returning from the past. Now that I'm going into my fourth year of kind of formalizing these structures, it's great to have some teachers who've been representatives for four years. It's great to have some who've been, who've come back maybe in their second or third year, and it was great to have some new faces represent some of our schools. We only had one person who had to be absent due to a conflict. Twenty-seven of our twenty-eight representatives attended today. We had a very productive meeting, and as we talked about the, the sort of operational pressures on the system due to the persisting pandemic, again, our teachers, you know, communicated about things that they're loving about being back in school and many of the joys and the celebrations of just being back with kids and being able to facilitate teaching and learning in this environment, despite all these pressures. But they also identified the things that are, that are challenges, that are hard. We have a sub crisis issue, a substitute crisis issue. This is not unique to NVUSD. It's not even unique to California. It's a national issue right now. There's a massive labor shortage in the educational field, and it's impacting across classified support staff to certificated teachers, to substitute teachers, and even at the leadership level. Teachers identified, which was great for my assistant superintendents and I to hear, just kind of what are sort of those boulders of challenge in the field we're aware of, but it's just always really nice to hear from the nuclei of the system, which is the classroom, where the magic happens for our children. And so there's coverage issues on the campuses. We have campus supervision challenges. The teachers talked extensively about the extended absences that they're having to deal with and, you know, just kind of having to manage what kids are present on what days and how to kind of make up work and make sure that the kids aren't getting behind. And they're giving so much care and attention to those issues that, you know, it's exhausting. Teaching and learning in normal conditions is exhausting, and these teachers are having to go. Our teachers are having to go the extra mile. And we, you know, I loved Emily, our student board representative, talked about what she's observing on her campus. We're seeing that from the central office. It got validated today by our teachers. Our students missed a year and a half plus of socialization. So your ninth graders in some ways are seventh graders, right? Because they missed a year and a half to two years of socialization on their campuses day in and day out. And so now that kids are comfortable being back in school, we are seeing some challenges around emotional dysregulation, which is to be expected. They've had pent up energy the last couple of years. They've been living and doing school under extraordinary extreme circumstances. And so it is challenging to address some of that dysregulation and provide students the support that they need while we have coverage issues, substitute teacher shortage, campus supervision challenges. And so, you know, I want to commend the Napa Valley Unified School District. I know that there may be some dissatisfaction there, but I've been sitting again on superintendent statewide meetings. We were in our regional meetings. Some of the trustees alluded to, vis a vis CSBA in region three. And we're hearing from the other board members and superintendents in the region, everyone is facing these challenges. And as I, you know, do some, a little bit of district comparison, which is going to be my natural instinct as a superintendent of schools, I feel like we are in a much more stable place than a lot of other, a lot of other places that are all navigating these systemic challenges. So I want to recognize my staff and thank them. And, you know, the last thing I want to illuminate is that the teachers really talked about, you know, the first and second graders, my elementary teacher representatives today brought up that the first and second graders who did kindergarten at home, like how challenging that is to like be in your educational journey as a first or a second grader, and you missed part of kindergarten where so much of that foundation, social foundation of socialization is set and then having to like tend to their grade level curriculum and then tune into all of that. So these are extraordinary circumstances. We continue to do the best job that we can. And I will continue to hold the system accountable to that while expressing tons of gratitude for how hard everyone is working. So for the most part, that concludes my report tonight, because I know we've, we've done extensive reports, and I want to toss to my assistant superintendent, our assistant superintendent Dana Page, who I'm going to prompt to go first, is going to elaborate on some of this labor shortage and how it's affecting us through her human resources leadership perspective. So let's start with Ms. Dana Page, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Thank you. Good evening, President Gonzalez-Mendez, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Masetti and Student Board Representative Bit. So I would also like to start off with a shout out to our incredible staff in all corners of the organization. Having in-person school with all the extras like sports, activities, interventions, events, et cetera, during an ongoing pandemic was really already very hard. The newest layer, which Dr. Masetti illuminated in her comments, that we're experiencing is a staffing shortage crisis, and it's hitting some of our key support positions. Thankfully, we've had staff jumping in and doing whatever they can. For instance, we have office managers doing contact tracing while nurses are shorthanded and super busy tending to medical needs of the in-person students. Bus drivers are now serving as campus supervisors and playground monitors in between their routes. And cafeteria assistants are picking up extra shifts and working double time while we fill numerous vacant positions. Teachers, counselors, and principals have been covering classes left and right as we do not have enough subs to cover absences. The daily challenge of covering classes is particularly worrisome. Many districts have found themselves needing to close classes, not because of COVID breakouts, but because they do not have teachers and subs. We're not there yet, and we're trying hard to avoid that kind of disruption. I mentioned last meeting that we've raised rates, offered hiring incentives, and have pushed out recruiting advertisements in new and different ways. We have an emergency substitute coverage action plan based on the number of average unfilled absences per day. We have enacted levels one through three, which included limiting the reasons for absences to cover illnesses only, teachers, counselors, administrators covering classes, assigning resident subs to larger campuses and utilizing sub hubs at the secondary level. And our latest measure, which we have erected an additional emergency subpool of interventionists and district administrators, who, starting October fourth, will be ready to jump into classes on a rotating basis as needed. And this includes every administrator at the district level with a credential to do so. So that means assistant superintendents and superintendent. Hopefully, this measure will be enough, and the impact on students will be limited. So right now, we're seeing small but steady growth in our subpool, but if our absences begin to outpace that rate, and we get to the point where we're experiencing fifteen or more uncovered absences on a regular basis, we will have to consider additional strategies, such as dividing students up and assigning them to other classes while teachers are out, to avoid closing classes entirely. I'd like to conclude my report by again expressing my thanks to my staff who are working quickly and creatively to recruit and fill positions in a very challenging environment. I'm optimistic that NVUSD will get through this, because we are incredibly strong together and better than ever, as this latest round of challenges has yet again proven. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page, and I'll let everybody know, Ms. Page covered English classes last week and taught. So as have many of the managers here from the central office, and like she said, principals are in classrooms, so. And we're all queued up in that pool, so I'll make sure my, my teaching tools are sharp and ready to go back in. So next, let's move to business. So we're going to hear from Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who covers business services.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. From data and assessment services, STAR assessment windows closed last week, and we'd like to thank all the teachers and administrators for their hard work in administering the assessments. In particular, we like to celebrate the elementary, middle, and high schools with the highest participation rates, which were sheer elementary, Redwood Middle, and New Tech High. Congratulations, great work. The data and assessment team has been working hard at analyzing the STAR data, and we look forward to sharing a detailed analysis from the fall of 2021 screening window at the next board meeting. In the technology department, I'd like to take a moment to congratulate Mr. Joe Bassinet on his new position, working for the Slana County Office of Education as our new technology director slash CTO. We know that you'll do very well in your new positions. Congratulations, Joe. We also like, wanted to thank you for your over fourteen years of outstanding service working in the district. I'd also like to congratulate Mr. Jordan Michaels for being recommended to become the new chief technology officer for the district. Jordan is a Napa native. He graduated from Bennett High School and worked for the district for the last ten years in increasingly responsible roles. Strategic Plan Goal Four, tactical, proactive, and efficient asset management continues to be addressed through centralized enrollment and community outreach to support all families with equitable access to NVUSD enrollment. We're moving into school enrollment for twenty-two, twenty-three. School registration begins October first with a focus on welcoming our new kindergarten families and increasing enrollment for transitional kindergarten students and all currently non-enrolled students interested in attending NVUSD. Open enrollment begins November first, offering families an opportunity to apply for non-resident schools as capacity allows. Anticipate seeing NVUSD advertisements on banners and buying transportation buses running from Calistoga, St. Helena, and south through Galajo, as we, as well as hearing radio advertisements as we invite families to enroll. In business services, the fiscal team is working on the one-time salary increase and the ongoing salary increase for the units that we have settled with, as well as preparing a new budget model for the first interim. We are also reviewing procedures and identifying areas needing improvement. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mangual. And it's amazing to hear that we continue to do our TK twelve assessment amidst all these operational pressures. So again, thank you to our educators who continue to persist and be determined in these extraordinary times. Mr. Pearson, our Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services is up next. And Mr. Pearson, can you believe we have a vintage crusher as our new chief technology officer?
Yes, Jordan and I have had an opportunity to discuss the fact that I believe I was an assistant principal at Bennett High School when he was a student there. I'm happy to report that Jordan did not have to ever visit my office for anything in a negative, negative manner. So good job there, Jordan, on that note. So good evening, President Gonzalez-Mendez. Board trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Representative Emily Bit, and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update in operational services. Tonight, I'm going to focus my update on new state legislation that will have a potential impact on operational services and or facilities in NVSD. Recently, a meeting was held with operational services directors, along with directors of elementary and secondary education, to discuss the impact of Senate Bill three twenty-eight, excuse me, it's likely three twenty, which outlines its high school, no, it is three twenty-eight, which outlines that high schools cannot start their school day earlier than eight thirty AM, beginning with the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Additionally, the Senate bill also outlines that middle schools cannot start earlier than eight AM. At this meeting, we started a discussion on opportunities and challenges the Senate bill poses to the operational services team. An example of an opportunity discussed is to set consistent start times for all the three grade level spans to allow parts of the operation team to be more efficient. And an example of a challenge will be the impact these new start times may have on extracurricular activities and involve our transportation services. Future meetings are already scheduled to continue our discussion and ultimately bring forth recommendations. In July of 2021, the state legislature passed Assembly Bill one thirty, which created a new grade level, universal transfer, transitional kindergarten, or TK, along with the potential funding for facilities, since TK students require certain facility needs. In addition, Assembly Bill twenty-two, which is not yet approved, describes the programmatic requirements for universal TK. Director of Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services of Elementary Education Matt Manning and myself will begin meeting later this week to start planning on the impact of facilities for universal TK and NVSD, along with recommendations to meet the anticipated increased facility needs and or modifications with more TK students. And then finally, I'd like to mention the new student commons at American Canyon Middle School. In the past month, the foundation's been poured and exterior walls have been secured, along with many of the beams to support this unique and transformative structure that will undoubtedly have an impact on student experiences at ACMS. As a reminder, the student comments, commons encompasses a large indoor seating area for up to four hundred students, covered outdoor seating for roughly one hundred students, a new kitchen facility, abundant storage, a new school library, and a new student innovation center to meet the project-based learning needs of the school site. In addition, the student commons will serve as a performing arts facility for the school's band, choir, and drama programs. And finally, the majority of the interior of the campus will also be updated in the summer of 2022 to serve physical education needs, along with providing outdoor learning experiences for the students and staff. Measure H is definitely making a positive impact on the facilities at American Canyon Middle School, along with at other schools mentioned at previous board meetings. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I want everybody to know that, again, amidst all of this operational pressure and challenge, Mr. Pearson's always keeping us on track. These are twenty-two, twenty-three issues when you think about transitional kindergarten implementation and the delayed start time for the secondary students. And Mr. Pearson. and the delayed start time for the secondary students, and Mr. Pearson is making sure when the first month of the current school year that we're looking ahead and keeping the team on track so that we're ready for any of those critical changes that are going to impact the system in 2223. So thank you for always looking ahead. All right. And last but not least, we have Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings, who oversees the Instructional Services Division.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, President Gonzalez-Mares, Board Trustees, Student on Board Representative Bit, Dr. Masetti, and the NBUSD community. Our staff is being stretched as we flex and bend to respond to the impact of COVID on our schools. Members, as Assistant Superintendent Page mentioned, members of Instructional Support Services Division has been supporting school sites by filling in as substitute teachers, campus supervisors, and even as a crossing guard to reduce the impact of quarantining due to a positive case. In classrooms, we are piloting a weekly pool testing starting next week at Willow Elementary School. The California Department of Public Health has contracted with Concentric, with the Concentric, which is a company that will provide staffing and the testing materials at no cost to the district. Willow families were sent a link this week to sign their child up to participate. If the process goes well, we will scale to all of our elementary schools. Pulled testing will allow us to catch positive cases more quickly and keep students in school. I want to thank the entire Instructional Services Team. They have demonstrated a true hands-on deck approach during these past few weeks. The Instructional Services Team remains committed to effectively implementing the board's annual priorities and LCAP goals, even with the impact of COVID. In relation to Board Priority Number One, NBUSD's Citizen Advisory Committee has held two meetings as part of the naming process for the new Middle School Language Academy. During the meeting on September 14th, the Citizen Advisory Committee identified interests, considerations, potential names, and ideas for gathering community input. Throughout the past, this past week, Principal Uribe visited classes at Napa Valley Language Academy and Pueblo Vista Elementary School, engaging with students in the naming process. She introduced the students to a special assignment with a brief video. All students and families at NVLA, Pueblo Vista, Harvest, and River Schools were invited to complete a survey prioritizing the considerations for a school name. The results of the survey will be presented at the Citizen Advisory Committee on Tuesday, September 28th. I also had the privilege of visiting Pueblo Vista's fifth and sixth grade classrooms today. Students were excited about contributing to the naming of the new Middle School, Middle School Language Academy, and I'm excited to finish up the last phase of the naming process in the coming weeks. In regards to the design work for all middle schools, over the last week, members of Executive and Full Cabinet engaged in a design thinking session to identify possible considerations and constraints in preparation for the larger middle school design team to meet in October. As we know, professional learning is a key component in implementation of Annual Board Priority Number Two, which is focused on MTSS. Due to the lack of substitute teachers, we've had to rethink how and when we are training teachers and resulting in offering more after-school training sessions. Recently, ninety teachers have attended training in the new phonics component of our benchmark program. A huge thank to our K2 teachers for the time and effort they are investing in learning this critical component. The work associated with improving the math achievement of our students connects directly to Board Priority Number Three. This past week, the work of identifying priority math standards started with all secondary leaders and our partner Inspire Learning, Dr. Tammy Hufflebauer. Site principals and assistant principals learned the what, why, and how of standards prioritization, as well as reviewed the implementation plan for the prioritization of math standards, which is set to launch on October 13th. And the secondary math pathway work group continues to meet to determine flexible and expanded pathways. In the USD, teachers, counselors, and leaders from each middle and high school are reviewing research and student data as they work on this key part of the math improvement work. And I'd like to end my report with a celebration. Valley Oak received the Model Continuation High School Award in the spring of 2020 through the Educational Options Office within the California Department of California Department of Education. But due to COVID, the conference and award ceremony were postponed and held, and they were held last week. So last week, Principal Cisneros and two staff members had the honor of receiving the award on the deck of the USS USS Midway in San Diego. So congratulations to Principal Cisneros and the incredible Valley Oak staff who are leading the way for continuation high schools in the state of California. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, and yes, congratulations to Valley Oak and Principal Cisneros and her team. I also just want to thank Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings. You heard in her report all the work that's being advanced around the first three annual priorities that you all set as a governance team. It's pretty extraordinary that her and her team have been able to continue to advance that agenda while also covering classrooms and teaching, and I'm sorry about that, and teaching in classrooms and providing campus supervision support, helping principals deal with operational issues at school. So thank you so much. I want to recognize my four assistant superintendents for the incredible work they're doing, leading their divisions. And with that, we're done with executive staff reports. President Gonzalez-Mares.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. We now go on to approval of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
A first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Jankowicz. Do I have any public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment for this item.
Yeah, any comment on the consent agenda items?
There is not.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet. There's a first and a second. Student Board Rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let me correct myself here. Vera, if you could conduct roll call, please.
Yes, student board member?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Ricer?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Shu?
Aye.
Trustee Dooley?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vera. Seeing that we had a previous motion to move items out of order, we now move to K1A. This is a presentation of 7-11 Committee Report for Carnaros Property and Adoption of Resolution 22-02 and a resolution declaring property as exempt surplus land. Dr. Masetti, who do we welcome right now?
So I want to welcome to this item will be facilitated Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala will be providing some information regarding this item. But I want to welcome tonight the Chair of our 7-11 Committee, who's been doing extraordinary work, leading that committee through this first property surplus process, and that is Barbara Franco, Barbara Franco, known in the community as Barb. And then our Vice Chair of that committee, who has been supporting her through the process and also it's just demonstrating extraordinary community service and leadership, which is Mr. Eric Housley. And both of them actually served as Chair and Co-Chair of our previous 7-11 Committee that dealt with school closures, and they were nominated again, and they've just been doing extraordinary work with this composition of the 7-11 Committee that's focused now on all the properties that we're working to surplus. So I want to welcome them, and I can't remember, help me out here, is Ms. Franco, are you Chair Franco? Are you going to kick us off, or is it Mr. Manguala first?
Um, I believe I'm going to go ahead and start, and then I'll reach out to Rob.
Great, thank you. All right, go to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having Eric and I this evening, and as we get ready to begin, the first thing I want to do is to thank the all the members of the 7-11 Committee. This is new work for all of us, learning how this process works, and I, Eric and I both appreciate the time that committee members are have put in in terms of learning all of the nuances about the Carnaros property, gaining a deeper understanding of the process we needed to go through in terms of coming to consensus around voting on whether to, on voting to put the Carnaros property up for sale. And we were only able to get to that point because of the information and guidance we had from Dr. Masetti and her staff, helping us understand the nuances of the Carnaros property. Over the three meetings, we met three times through August and met twice in August, and we met once in September. The meeting in September involved the writing of the report, which you have received. The report is not lengthy, as our charge this time around was very narrow in terms of, again, learning about the Carnaros property and coming to an agreement around whether we believe it should be put up for sale to first become surplus and then make a decision to put it up for sale. I want Eric, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so, yeah, thanks, Barb. And even before that, thank you for moving us up one spot in the agenda. It's past my bedtime. I don't know how you guys do this, so. So, yes, one of the primary things that I brought up that had come out was the discussion of would this property make more sense for sale or for lease for continued revenue streams like has been done with Justin C and our other options that could come around. And we made some different calls, Rob and I, Mr. Manguala and I got in touch, and and I also reached out to some others about the possibility of what actually could happen on that property. And after some lengthy discussions, there was a lot of limited really options to do it that would justify even a an apples-to-apples comparison that would make it worthwhile to even go down that road. So it was, there was no ROI that would justify the lease option to us over the sale option based on the length of time, and that ROI would be so significantly longer if ever on the lease option based on the location. So that was, that was about it on that part.
Yeah, well, thank you. Like I said, the process was brief. It was a very narrow item that we were focused on, and I want, Rob, do you have anything additional to add?
I do, I do. Well, first off, let me, let me thank you, Ms. Franco and Mr. Housley for your time and the rest of the 7-11 Committee members. We really appreciate the time, effort, and expertise that you've all put into this. So assuming that the board takes action and declares that Carnel's property exempt surplus property, we will need to follow the legal process for selling a property. And so I'll outline that kind of below. So the process of selling exempt surplus property that's owned by a school district is outlined in the education code as opposed to an individual which may simply list the property for sale and negotiate the terms. Education Code outlines a very specific process aimed at ensuring that a school district obtains the highest price for the property. In recent years, a very common use practice involves school districts pursuing the ability to publish a competitive request for proposals where the school district requests bids on the property along with the terms. School districts then evaluate proposals with a goal of settling on the highest purchase price with terms that favor the school district. In a perfect scenario, the district will enter a contract with the bidder that has the highest price in terms that allow the bidder to show that they're truly interested in buying the property. We refer to this process as a waiver process because it does involve securing a waiver from the State Board of Education. The term waiver may seem counterintuitive, but it actually allows for a more competitive process. So the Napa Valley Unified School District does intend to follow the waiver process. This process does include filing paperwork with the California Department of Education. This is the exact same process that we followed with the Vintage Farm and we received ten bids for that property, so we feel it was very competitive. In some, the waiver process positions the district for maximum success. So there is another step that we need to do before we do that, though. So prior to filing the paperwork with the state, the district is required to have a meeting to discuss the process with stakeholders. Given that the 7-11 Committee is highly invested in this property and the process, I'm recommending that we reconvene the 7-11 Committee to discuss and receive some feedback about the waiver process. And so we're planning to tenderly meet in on October 19th. Our goal is for the board to then take action on this final step, the waiver process at the November 18th board meeting, Board of Education meeting, and then file the waiver with CDE. And then it'll take some time for the waiver to potentially be approved. There's so many that's approved by the California Department of Education. At that point, we would be eligible to sell the property as a part of the process, though. We will be able to market the property to it. And this concludes my update.
Thank you, Mr. Mangual. So the where, what we're bringing you tonight to the board is our report, as I said, with the recommendation to surplus a property for sale. The 7-11 Committee, as Rob explained, we will meet again in October to review and gain a deeper understanding of the process that the district will be, the district will be following in terms of the waiver process, which is the same process they went through with the Vintage Farm. And as Rob said, that meeting is scheduled for October 19th. And that will come back to the board, I assume, for another vote. Is that correct, Dr. Masetti?
Yes, and I'll defer to Rob. Do you want to talk about, there will be a second action item coming to the board as Chair Franco has prompted here, correct, Ms. Mangual?
That is, that is correct, right? So tonight, we're, the board will be taking action on declaring the property exempt surplus. The the final step would be after the 7-11 Committee meets on October 19th would be to on, on November 18th, the board would take action on filing the waiver with CDE.
And
Separate action.
Yeah, unless anybody has any questions. For Eric or myself, this would conclude our report to the board on the recommendation to surplus the Carnaros property for sale.
Thank you, Ms. Franco. Before we go on to questions, I just want to, on behalf of the board, thank you and us Chair of the 7-11 Committee, as well as Eric Housley as Vice Chair of the Committee, and to thank everybody for their participation. And if pushing you forward one item was enough to thank you, then we'd be done here, but we know that we owe you more than that. So thank you for going through that.
And I just have to say, Chair Franco, I don't know if, I know you all have been watching or either live or the videos, but she's just been doing an extraordinary job of moving through those agendas and facilitating the group. So we are very, very lucky that we have community members that we can call upon to do that kind of work. So just very impressive. So I want to thank the both of them and thank them for their facilitation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep, some questions?
Rob, did we determine that the parcel was 9.4 acres? I know we were checking whether it was 9.4 or 10.
So, yeah, right now, it's sitting around 9.7. So I think Mr. Pearson does have some additional information. I did read a memo that does imply that the property is is slightly over 10 acres when you include the easement that was provided for the road when it was originally built. So I think we are sitting slightly above 10 acres. Is that correct, Mr. Pearson?
Yes, Mr. Mangual, that appears to be correct. I do want to, you know, caution us to not get too excited because I want to review that document more closely, and but it does appear that it is going to, it does have a little bit over 10 acres when we include the easement of the road that was granted many, many years ago to the county.
Okay, thank you. I do believe it is in our best financial interest to declare the property surplus, sell the property, and not lease the property for reasons that were well-established and articulated in the committee dialogue and Eric's comments this evening. It is in our best interest to make prudent financial decisions. Proceeds generally will be used for capital outlay or non-recurring maintenance costs, which are a budget need. And I too want to thank the 7-11 Committee for your consideration and willingness to lend your individual expertise to this process. There are many causes worthy of your time, and I appreciate that you have chosen NBUSD. Thank you all very much.
So I too wanted to just take a brief moment to say thank you for serving on the committee and doing the hard work of making this recommendation and bringing it tonight to us at the board. So thank you. And if you can let the fellow members of your 7-11 Committee know at the next meeting, we really do appreciate it.
They said.
Thank you, trustees, for your comments and lots of nodding heads here that we are all very much grateful for your, for your support.
that we are all very much grateful for your, for your support in this effort. I also want to, before we move forward with our action, to check if we have any public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment for this item.
Move to approve.
Second. A first by trustee Gracia, a second by trustee Dooley, student board rep.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose or abstain? Motion passes. Thank you very, very much, everybody.
Thank you all.
Good to bed. Yeah, good night.
Ms. Franco and Mr. Houseley.
Get some rest while you, you can. Okay, all right. So now we are back in order here under presentations and discussion items, which is item J1A. This is the K12 Mathematics Program update.
Yes, thank you, President Gonzalez-Mares, Board Trustees and Student Board Representative Bit. Tonight, the Directors of Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services, Matt Manning and Monica Ready are presenting an update on the math program work that addresses specifically Board Priority Number Three. Director Manny Manning and Director Ready will frame the update in terms of where are we going, where are we now, and what's next. So Director Ready, please take it away.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. So good evening, President Gonzalez-Mares, Board of Trustees and Dr. Masetti. Thank you for the opportunity to give an update this evening on our annual board priority focused on TK12 Math Program Alignment. Next slide, please. So Director Manning and I, along with the instructional support team, are excited and committed to bringing alignment and coherence to the TK12 Mathematics Program and MBUSD. And we appreciate the focus and prioritization from the board on mathematics as it is very much an area of need for additional support and resources for our students. Next slide, please. The presentation this evening, as previously mentioned, is focused on three questions. Where are we going? Where are we now and what's next? In order to improve TK12 Mathematic Programming and Student Mathematic Achievement Outcomes in the 2021 school year, we will focus on the following key indicators, which are adopted from the annual board priority success indicators. The first one being the implementation of K12 Proficiency Scales and Priority Standards. The implementation of highly effective instructional practices, including tiered intervention. Vertical articulation at key transition points, including that fifth to sixth grade transition and the eighth to ninth grade transition. Defined and published pathways for sixth through 12th grade. And launching a secondary math curriculum adoption committee in late spring for a pilot in the fall of 2022, 2023 school year. With that, Director Manning will provide an update on our current progress with elementary mathematics. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Director Ready, and good evening, President Gonzalez-Mares, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti and Student Board Member Bit. So in terms of where we all are, TK12, we have entered into a partnership with Dr. Tammy Hufflebauer, who is a highly respected and highly skilled educational leader. She has extensive experience working with successfully with districts throughout the country as they do the work of prioritizing standards and developing proficiency scales. Our work officially launched last week and continued into this week. Our elementary and secondary district academic specialist met with Dr. Hufflebauer last week, followed by a session this week for secondary leaders at elementary. We do have priority standards in place. We also have proficiency scales that have been developed for both ELA, English Language Arts and Math. And we have a revised report card that we will be launching this year. The new report card is aligned with our proficiency scales and provides parents with a clearer understanding of how their students are performing in relation to the priority standards. Director Ready, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. And April and May, at the secondary level, we met with every secondary math department to listen to our staff and gather feedback regarding our current secondary math programming. Through these learning sessions, it became clear that our math teachers desire clarity, desire coherence, which is aligned with our annual board priority. During the 2021-2022 school year, three work groups were identified to support the forward progress of our key math indicators. And those groups were a math pathway work group, an instructional practices work group, and a curriculum work group. So to start this year, we launched the math pathways work group. And in order to provide additional support to this key priority, we're excited, as mentioned earlier, to have Kendra Parsons join our second, as a secondary TOSA. You've had the opportunity, as mentioned before, to hear Kendra present during board study sessions and board meetings. Ms. Parsons brings extraordinary secondary math experience and instructional coaching, and I'm really excited to have her on our team partnering with us in this work. Next slide, please.
So I wanted to provide a little bit more about where we are in terms of currently with elementary. So the elementary team is committed to successful implementation of our core math program Bridges Mathematics. This graphic is, depicts a framework for thinking about the critical components of effective teaching and learning. And it includes curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So we do have curriculum in place and assessments that are aligned to that curriculum. We are currently focused on supporting teachers with the instructional element through ongoing training and coaching. Our coaching is focused on supporting teachers as they leverage the curriculum and the available math assessment data to plan instruction and improve student learning. Next slide, please. So I wanted to share an example of a proficiency scale because we're talking about those this evening and we'll continue referencing them as we provide updates throughout the year. Mr. Bassin, if you can open, click on the link for us. Thank you. Can you increase the size of that? Thank you. So a proficiency scale is a table that's used by teachers and students to determine a student's current level of progress towards meeting a standard. So your proficiency scales indicate student achievement as it relates to a given standard and uses a four-point system where a three indicates proficiency with the standard. Teachers use the tools to determine where to target teaching for a group of students. Students already demonstrating proficiency on a grade level standard can be a challenge to apply their knowledge in other contexts, which would be at the level four expectation. So teachers are able to use this tool to really determine where students are entering their learning, where they can best meet students where their current level of learning is, and how to help them move to the next level of learning. Next, back to the presentation and the next slide, please. Thank you. So I wanted to provide you a visual of where we are with elementary in terms of our curriculum and assessment. The elementary instructional team has invested significant time this year and last year into aligning our curriculum and assessment for teachers. So the goal is to take out the guesswork for teachers as, so that they can focus on instruction and analysis instead of finding assessments that match up with our priority standards. So we have an example of a priority standard here, which is a second grade standard, represent and solve problems involving addition and subtraction. Use addition and subtraction within 100 to solve one and two-step word problems. So on our new report card, which I described, mentioned previously, we have broken out that standard in terms of a learning progression. So it's very clear to parents and teachers what a student should be doing at the beginning of the year in order to be successful on a standard at the end of the year. So in this case, at the, at the end of the first trimester, a student would need to identify the math operations and solve one-step word problems using addition and subtraction within 20. So that's the first step towards meeting a higher level that's represented in the priority standard. We also have aligned these priority standards in our report card expectations with our curriculum. So made it very clear for teachers where in the curriculum these standards are taught to mastery. And new this year, we've also, or we actually knew at the end of last year, we have added the, where in our curriculum teachers can find assessments so that when there, it comes time to grading and giving feedback to students and parents, they can go right to the assessments and we've pointed them in direction of, in the direction of where those assessments are located. Thank you. Next slide, please.
Mr. Bassinet, could you click on the link where it says newsletter? Thank you. When supporting math improvement in previous years, we've had a small team of teachers from sites who've come together. Their task with, the responsibility of engaging in district work and then bringing that information back to their sites. And in reflecting on this practice and listening to our math teachers in the spring, there's a strong interest in, in communication as we build clarity and coherence and alignment. So in response to staff and in alignment with the strategic plan goal number three, which calls for supporting informed employees, we launched a monthly math newsletter, as you heard earlier tonight from our Board of Trustees. As a team of teachers and leaders, review, revise, and implement priority standards, proficiency scales, and assessments, which are truly foundational to the work that we need to do to help students. We look forward to this communication tool, serving our math teachers broadly across the district, keeping them informed as we have these smaller teams work so that they can have a more successful implementation in their classrooms. If you could return to the presentation, Mr. Bassinet, and click to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as mentioned earlier, the, the first work group to launch was a math pathway work group. And this, the timing of this is really important to being able to establish these, these goals before we have our master schedule and our registration season that comes towards November and then January. So the purpose of the math pathway work group is two-pronged. There's two goals, the flexible and expanded pathways and expanded high school course offerings for year three and four for our students. So currently, the math pathway work group is met throughout September where we have spent some time analyzing the current research that's out there as well as pathways from other, other districts and other areas, as well as what's recommended from the California Department of Education. Upcoming meetings will look at our current student data, so individualized data, and then also trend data for our students as they move through these pathways. And we're looking forward to returning with an update to the board and future meetings regarding this work. And I'll hand it back over to Director Manning as he starts to look at our next steps with elementary and secondary.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So I'll go ahead and start with what's next for elementary. Next slide, please. Next slide, there we go. So we, as, as mentioned previously, we are partnering with, with Tammy Hufflebauer to evaluate our proficiency scales. So at elementary, we already have our priority standards well-defined and in use by teachers. So we'll be joining the work that the secondary team is doing around, when, when they begin with an evaluation of the proficiency skills. So we want to take a second look at those at elementary with an expert and, and just evaluate those and, and determine how we can, how we can ensure that teachers are using those in the classroom and to guide their instruction. So we're looking forward to support in that work. We have ongoing training and coaching that we're providing. We have Pia Hanson, who is our coach from the Math Learning Center. And she'll be, she's, she'll be providing six weeks of support this year. She had her first week here in, in MBUSD last week. So the intervention teachers are being trained in the use of the Bridges Intervention Materials. They were trained last week and they will begin in the, in the coming weeks, providing intervention to students based on their new learning around the intervention program. We'll continue to align our assessments and ensure that those are aligned with our progress report expectations. That work is ongoing. We're finishing up our ELA work this week. And then in terms of our elementary principal learning, we're beginning data cycles focused on math and aligning that to our CIPSU goals. Principals are conducting learning walks in the classrooms. We have a new observation protocol that we've developed at elementary. It's a common observation protocol that we use across schools and MBUSD that will allow principals to engage in, in coaching conversations with their, with their teachers. So at our, one of our principal meetings coming up in October, the principals will bring back their observations and share with each other how things are going and provide some ongoing support to each other in their learning. We also have the, the new principal training that's happening. I have a few new principals at our elementary schools, so providing them training in our Bridges Program. They're conducting learning walks with Barb Corner, who is another coach who we have, retired teacher and amazing coach who we have working with us. So we're, we're providing that more intensive level of support to our new principals. Director Ready?
Thank you, Director Manning. Next slide, please, Mr. Bassinet. Before moving into secondary, I just have to thank Director Manning for his leadership and work that's happening at the elementary level. Their work is about two to three years ahead of the secondary level. And so having that model and having that train be a little further down the tracks that we can look to and align with is commendable. So thank you. With regard to curriculum and instruction for the 2021-2022 school year, we're focused on really building that foundation at the secondary level. So building systems of coherence and alignment that support student growth and achievement in math. By focusing on these few key areas that you'll see on the next slide, we feel like we'll be positioned to, to start to implement those high-impact instructional practices in the classroom, allowing for time for the framework to be adopted from the California Department of Ed at the state level and then setting the foundation for us to have a successful math curriculum pilot. So with that, our key instructional practices that will be focused on this year, the first three are really that foundation. And the fourth bullet that you see on the slide is what we're building towards at the end of the year. So coalescing a common set of prioritized curriculum standards. We have those. And so really taking a moment to pause and review them, revise them, and begin to start adopting them and implementing them systematically across our 612 schools. Devolving and refining proficiency scales. So our proficiency scales were developed and we're ready to be piloted. And then we went into distance learning in March of, due to COVID. And so we have those, those need to be reviewed and revised and, and implemented in this year. And we are grateful to have the support of Inspire Consulting and Dr. Tammy Hufflebauer to do that work with us. Thirdly, review and revision of existing assessments. So looking at our assessment practices, this came up as a high need. Again, while listening to our math, our math teachers across the district, especially as we faced conditions of distance and hybrid learning, having ways that we can effectively assess where students are in their learning so that we can support them with what they need next. And so having those assessments aligned to proficiency scales should be something that we can have accomplished by the end of this year. And that all leads to being able to provide direct instruction and support for using these proficiency scales in the classroom. These are only as, as strong and as good as students being able to know where they are, being able to get feedback and track their progress and, and have students be able to set goals so that they can start to, what be, what we call assessment-capable learners. And so we're looking forward to these four key instructional practices and the foundation being laid for, for the upcoming year as we do this work. Next slide, please. And with that, we'll pause and take questions.
And before we open it to questions, Director Ready, I just wanted to say thank you to Director Ready and Director Manning. They've done a phenomenal job of laying sort of the foundation for the work that, that needs to happen. And I do want to say and just spotlight one of the things that Director Manning mentioned around the observation protocol that's principals went over, I think, last week and are starting to use. That, that is something that we have not had in MBUSD where you have observable look forwards, basically, like actions that you can see either a student or a teacher doing to indicate whether or not they are making a good, a good progress in their math instruction as well as students in their math practice. So I just really wanted to spotlight that and thank Director Ready and Director Manning for their presentation.
So I'll start comments then. One thing I wanted to highlight is these new report cards. You know, I've heard quite a bit about them at the Curriculum Committee. And I gave quite a bit of feedback on the inadequacy of our previous report cards at the elementary level. So I'm kind of excited to see how these new ones look and work for our parents and students. So that's a exciting new innovation that hopefully will be impactful for folks. I noticed that we have the Secondary Math Newsletter. And I would like to encourage you to consider an Elementary Math Newsletter. Teachers at the secondary level like to be informed. Well, so do the teachers at elementary level. They appreciate being kept up to date on what's going on with regard to these items. So I would encourage the use of that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gracia. Other comment? Just you? So I would say American Canyon is probably the only area that you have robotics with integrated math. So I, I know a lot of parents have come to me and asked me, where does that pathway fit into this work? And what are the priorities? And what are you actually looking for when you're looking at what pathways you might want to pursue in your pilot? Is it based on scores that you would find if the math was taught with robotics versus not? I know American Canyon Middle School has had that. I believe Redwood had it for a year, like three years ago. I don't know how comparable those numbers are given COVID last year. So I guess just a general understanding of how do you So I guess just a general understanding of how do you prioritize programs? And kind of in there would be honors programs too, because I do see Math II and Math III honors at various schools, but it's not continuous. So I guess maybe describe when you do your, your next step, which is the program and to evaluate programs. What are you looking for? And how do you prioritize?
Director Eddie, do you want to take that or do you want me to start?
Again, go ahead and start us off. We actually had a math pathway meeting today. And that was, that was some of the work that we had. So our instructional coaches, Kendra Parsons, and then our partner at Napa County Office of Education actually had the opportunity to attend a math leadership conference at Stanford University around the visioning for what is the future of mathematics and how do you lead in this environment? And so some of the research that we explored today was actually what are the careers that we're preparing students for? And what are the, the fields that in which students need to be prepared for? And as a result of that, what needs to be embedded in the courses that currently exist? And what, what course offerings need to exist? And so the, the increased need for data science, probability and statistics and areas such as, such as robotics were topics of conversation today. And so I think you're just highlighting a need that we have as we do this work to really have a vision of what, what future are we preparing our students for? And as a result, what selection of courses or what integration of, of what, what do we need to integrate within those courses in order to prepare them for that vision that we have? So I look forward to coming back with some of, some of those ideas that come about from the group as a result of grounding and some of the, the research and how we prepare students.
Tracy Chu, does that answer your question or did you have some additional clarifying?
No, that, that's, that answers my question because I think there's not many specifics I can ask about the program since you're still evaluating it. I just want to know a general understanding of when you're approaching, you know, develop, re-aligning all of our schools, how, how do you approach it? And I think you've answered that well. My next question is about secondary assessments. You know, in the elementary level, everybody's in general ed. But once you get into middle school and high school, you do have some students that are accelerated in math and others who are taking the, you know, the very standard timeline of math. So when you do assessments using something like STAR, I know it's supposed, it is adaptive. But you know, comparing somebody who is in eighth grade taking Math 1, I don't know if that's quite the same as evaluating somebody who's taking Math 8. So is that part of the work when you talk about, I think in your instructional practices slide, second to the last slide, you said review and revision of existing assessments used to measure knowledge and skills. Is that part of that work that you're, you're going to try to look at how to better assess these students, given their, their grade level isn't necessarily where, where their, their class level is?
So Tracy Chu, there's actually multiple ways that teachers sort of assess, you know, where students are from. You know, whether it's an exam in class or a quiz that they might use for, say, a student that's in eighth grade, that's in Integrated Math 1. The STAR assessments, sort of our purpose for that is to get sort of the district wide view of how our students are doing. And they can also identify areas where a student might be struggling, even if they are in Integrated 1, but are eighth graders, because students still might have areas that they might need to strengthen. And that would be helpful for a teacher to know as student progresses through a higher level of math. I don't know if Director Ready or Director Manning has anything to add around the STAR assessment and how teachers might use those to sort of inform their instructional practice or inform student progress.
Did you want to add to that, Director Ready?
I can go after you. It's okay.
So just that, it is one of the important data points that we, that we use in guiding our instruction. And we also have with, with our math program, we have curriculum embedded assessments. So our Bridges program has assessments that students take at the end of each unit. So we really look to those assessments because they come up more frequently to, to guide and, and use as a tool for planning instruction. So the Renaissance, the STAR math assessment is an important dipstick and measure. And I would say that we really rely primarily in terms of instructional planning purposes on the Bridges assessments that we evaluate, that teachers use to evaluate student learning.
And that's at the elementary level. So Director Ready, you want to share? Because I think that that's, Tracy Chu had a question around, particularly around honors and how students might be evaluated or assessed.
So I, I think that the easiest way to reference it is looking at slide seven, a Director Manning slide regarding how the priority standards align to the expectations are aligned to an assessment is that in that course, you have those different levels where that assessment should align to the proficiency scale. And so as we do this work and connect those assessments within the classroom to those proficiency scales or if across the district, then a student in that should be pushed to that, that four or to whatever numerical value with those very specific standards that you could see with regard to the STAR assessment. It is, as you mentioned, computer adaptive. So a student could be in a particular course, but they could have questions that are assessing them above the level of that particular course. And so that information would be something that could be analyzed by a teacher to look at what skills are they strong in, what knowledge are they strong in, and what areas could we differentiate? And that's some of the work that, that we need to do with our, our secondary math teachers around how to use that STAR assessment for those differentiated practices.
And is it easy using the STAR assessment then to evaluate one year's time and one year's growth with one year's time when you're talking about somebody who is in Math 1 versus a Math 8 during their eighth grade year? Because my, my assumption is that people who get into Math 1 in their eighth grade year, they're probably higher achieving in terms of their STAR scores at the end. And so I know it's harder to go up the scale as you're, when you're already at whatever the, I can't remember what it was called, at exceeding standards or whatever, right, meeting standards. So how do you use that score to really inform you whether or not this higher achieving student actually grew in one year's time?
There is a score within the STAR assessment called the student growth percentile. That would allow you to see their growth over time. And so that could be used to identify their growth. As far as using that within the classroom, it, it isn't necessarily aligned directly to the particular standard that's being taught. And so I think it speaks to the importance of having those assessments aligned to the current standards within that course and being able to track that over time, knowing that you have the STAR assessment for a student who may be beyond that level that adds additional information to see how they're growing. Sometimes you can see a student who has, has high performance, but they may not be making high growth. And so that's where that secondary indicator with the STAR assessment would be helpful information in addition to the assessments and the grades that are coming from within the class period. And so using those multiple measures would help you see, are they really growing? Are they performing at that level and not growing and comparing those two? We definitely have some work to do in that area with helping our staff understand how to use both of those, as well as the development of assessments aligned to our proficiency scale so that they can do that work.
Director Ready, if I could just jump in there really quickly with a kind of a follow-up question as she leads some of the refinement work at the secondary level. As we do some of the improvements around acceleration, math acceleration, math pathway and placement work, do you see your department recommending that the STAR assessment would be a tool or criterion that we sort of establish for placement in acceleration?
Definitely. I think we need to have multiple indicators. There's also the, the open access piece as well. So if a student wants to access that, but I think the STAR assessment will definitely be supportive of seeing not only the student's placement in that course, but how to then support them once they're in that course. Should they accept, should they access that course or acceleration pathway? We're also using the STAR as a, as a data point in our upcoming meeting along, alongside students matriculation through those pathways to see how are students doing as they accelerate? And how are students doing in the traditional pathway? And is there a need for, is there a need for different acceleration points as a result of our own data with students?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. A lot of my questions and things that I was wondering about were incorporated into the presentation. I just wanted to thank you for taking this on and the words that come to mind are just, you're being so incredibly strategic and collaborative. I'm really, as a former teacher, so impressed with the development of these proficiency scales. It just is, I, I can't stress enough how helpful I think that this is going to be for teachers and how much it's going to empower our learners and how it's going to bring consistency to our grading. Because it's, there has been in the past a real, I think, inconsistency about whether you're grading a student's progress towards the end and whether, whether if they're on their way, that constitutes a three in the first marking period versus a two because they haven't reached the end goal post and finish line for that standard. And I just, I think this is going to be incredibly powerful. So I'm grateful to Director Manning for, for leading the charge on this in the elementary. And as Director Ready said, getting a little further down the track and showing what it looks like and, and, and how it, how it empowers teachers and learners and how it's going to really enhance the communication to parents as well. So I'm, I'm really proud of the work that you've done and very excited to see this carried out at secondary as well because I think it will bring with it those same incredible improvements. So thank you for your hard work and for being so strategic and, and smart and collaborative.
I just want to say one thing before we move from this item. So I want to recognize the work of the Instructional Division, just dovetailing on what Trustee Riser said. I think that it's really important to recognize and not undervalue how high leverage it is that we have our two directors who oversee curriculum instruction and English learner services at the elementary and the secondary co-delivering this presentation. I cannot tell you my experience in school districts, various school districts, and how often there is misalignment between secondary and elementary. And they're kind of spinning off in their own universes. I would say that we have kind of a past historical practice of that even here. And it's the quarantine that is kind of bringing that together. And so that's just really, really important to recognize and not undervalue because this, the power is in that vertical articulation that you're observing. So I want to thank Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Jennings and her team for approaching the mathematics education improvement work in that way. Because it's, it's the spinning separately that will get you nowhere, really. So and then secondly, I just want to thank the school board because this is you by doing the strategic sort of direction setting and prioritizing this as an annual priority. You can see the depth of work. It really positions the instructional staff to be able to discern what to focus on, where to go deep. And you can see the depth in the work that they're presenting in front of you as they just launch kind of this initial first phase of improvement around the math focus. So I want to thank you for prioritizing this because it's a need for our kids. It's long time overdue. And it's through your strategic direction setting as a governance team that it just positions the staff to be able to focus, put this top of mind. And then me as a superintendent to sort of hold them accountable to making progress in this area. So I think we're going to make an impact in, in the educational outcomes of our kids when it comes to math. So thank you.
My comment was very much related to what you just said, Dr. Missetti, but of course, much more eloquently and with more instructional experience background and a doctorate in education. So but that was my observation in this overall is the excitement that not too long ago did we have our, our long conversation about English language learners. And as we look at our STAR reading proficiency and STAR math proficiency always breaks down with our students who are all students, English learners, and then students with IEPs. So having that combination, as you just explained, is to me the part that I'm looking forward to the outcomes of all of that work because it's extremely connected. And I look, you know, that was exactly that. So I'll leave it there. Any other comments or questions? If not, I will ask Mr. Bassinet if there's any public comment on this item.
We do have public comment. First person will be Sylvia. Go ahead with your comment.
Hi, good evening. It's me again. We should get used to each other. You guys have me for 18 years as I am going to be a lifer with my kindergartner still here. I just wanted to pop in really quickly and thank Trustee Chu for bringing to both the board and to the district a lot of the concerns that we have shared with her individually through email, through phone calls around our concern with really strengthening the math pathway from the secondary sixth grade through, through sixth to through 12th. There's a couple of things that I wanted to comment with regards to the presentation. There was a lot of, I saw a lot, a mention of intervention. And I'd like there to be more inclusion of strengthening and supporting the accelerated students and how that would, would happen and take place and take form within the current middle school campus. I know that right now, kids who are accelerated are able to go to the high school campuses to take classes. And but I always reflect on kind of where our sixth and seventh graders right now are. And I think of them more as fourth and fifth graders entering a middle school campus and will be experiencing that kind of smaller, younger generation entering the intermediate secondary schooling a little bit differently. And, and so I think of that in terms of not having them, you know, shuffled off to a high school campus or even a college campus, even though concurrent enrollment would be available. So thinking about how we can strengthen that pathway as well within our current campuses to give kids the tools that they need in order to continue to thrive within their own school campus setting. The other thing that I wanted to comment on was for American Canyon, specifically the middle school, we've have, we've been very blessed with, with our teacher, Ms. Tammy Lee and the work that she has done and the time that she has devoted to the curriculum developed around Math 1 and robotics. And a consideration of her curriculum being integrated into the district and honors being put into that as well. I would continue to advocate for that for the benefit of all of our kids in our district. Even kids that are kind of borderline, you know, proficient have really taken off. And my daughter is, has been one of the kids who has benefited from being with a teacher, just like Ella Powers shared earlier in the, in the present, or at the beginning of the meeting. Teachers really do change lives. And I think Ms. Lee has really changed the way, not only her students, but parents look at math and are, are passionate about this. And so I'd like you guys to consider to take that into account as you move forward. And just thank you so much and great presentation. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Was there another speaker, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no further comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, a couple of things we need to do. One is we need to extend our meeting time.
Move to extend till 1:00 AM.
That was a first by Trustee Jankowicz and a second by Trustee Gracia. Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Thank you. And apparently I was just excited to keep moving forward, but we need to go back to the 7/11 vote because it's a resolution and Vera is to take roll call. So my apologies there. So K1A, this is the 7/11 committee report. We voted on that. There was a first and a second. Vera, did you want to take roll call or did you need a first and a second again?
I can do the roll call. Okay. Student Board Member?
I.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
I.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Trustee Jankowicz?
I.
Trustee Gracia?
I.
Trustee Riser?
I.
Trustee Water?
I.
Trustee Shoe?
I.
Trustee Dooley?
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
So Vera, just to be clear for the record, you'll take the first and the second from the vote previously and now record the roll call, is that correct?
Correct.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item. A1B.
Move to proof.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes, thank you. This is K1C Administrative Regulation 1340, access to district records.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Riser. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you, Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. K1D Board Policy 3540, Transportation.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Riser. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment.
Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Item K1E Administrative Regulation 3541, Transportation Routes and Services.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley, do I have public comment?
There is no public comment.
Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Item K1F Administrative Regulation 3541 dot one, Transportation for School Related Trips.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley, do I have public comment?
There is no public comment.
Trustnet, Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Thank you. I am K1G Purchase of iPad Cards.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment?
There is no public comment.
Nice, oh. Things trustee's water paper rubbing on the. I'm sorry, K. Or K2A, this is now our local assignment options for teacher assignments. For 2021, 2022.
Did we vote though?
We had a motion.
Did I get distracted on the iPad cards? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have to vote.
Let's go back on that. K1G Purchase of, it's not my best night tonight, everybody, my apologies. I will get us through the night, purchase of iPad cards. We had a first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Dooley, do I have public comment, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment.
Thank you, Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes, thank you. Item K2A, this is the local assignment options for teacher assignments, 21, 20, 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Riser. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Bassinet, Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Excellent, is the amendment to Article 2 dot 13 dot one of the CCA Collective Bargain Agreement Contract Language?
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley. Do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Thank you, Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. Now onto item K3A, this is the MOU between Stanford Youth Solutions and Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley, do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Thank you, Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Repose, strain? Motion passes. Next item is School Plans for Student Achievement for Elementary, Middle and High Schools.
I'll move this forward, but I'd like to have some discussion before we vote.
I have a second.
Yeah, first by trustee Gracia and a second by trustee Dooley. Go ahead, trustee Gracia.
Yes, I would like to request the Instruction Division continue to help build site capacity. As a board member, I'm looking for these goals to be SMART goals. And it appears to me that there is a lack of specific and measurable in many of the goals that I reviewed. The more we can have specificity and measurability for me as a board member. That would make these goals a lot easier to understand and I would appreciate those pieces being included. More consistently in the future.
Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, do you want to respond on that?
Um, yes, we will, we, we definitely continue to work directly with site principals and school site councils on. Making sure that the quality of the goal and the specificity of the goal, you know, is measurable. And that's continued work.
I'll, I'll make a comment, I thought the plans from each school fundamentally addressed. The same issues, the process and development of strategies to achieve. Their achievement goals and fund allocation, all within the context of the strategic plan. The, the data was presented differently, priorities were different based on student populations, funding and need. The constant seemed to be learning loss and COVID impact. The variables were many, but primarily approach. I appreciated how many schools articulated their strategies and detailed the individual activities that supported that strategy, gave clarity to their approach. To meet the ESSA requirements in alignment with our LCAP and provide specificity around each strategic goal. I did find value in Canyon Oaks' approach, how they identified need, gave percentage breakdowns, and then a strategy aligned with each learning group. And New Tech used a similar approach, and I thought it provided insight into the why behind each goal. There was commonality amongst the prevalent issues, but I did notice some differences in how sites addressed grading practices, teacher evaluations. MTSS and SCL implementation. Our job in a governance capacity is to review alignment with the strategic plan. To ensure that each document has a set direction for achievement and set priorities that align with the LCAP and student achievement goals. And I believe that was accomplished by each site, so I do approve this item.
I also want to highlight all of the site councils that do a lot of hard oversight work on these. I've, when I was on Site Council at Northwood, it was one of, I mean, it's, it's one of the main duties of the Site Council and it's, it's a lot of work that they do, so. I, you know, I agree with trustee Gracia, we want to make sure that these are meaningful documents for the sites to, to. You know, focus their, their energy on. But I just wanted to extend the thanks to all of the Site Council members.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other comments? So we had a first and a second, I will check if we have public comment on this item, Mr. Bassinet?
There is no public comment.
Student Board Rep?
I.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Great, thank you, motion passes. Now item K3C, this is agreement between Morgan Bayne and Napa Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Gracia, second by trustee Dooley, do I have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment.
Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Oppose or abstain? Motion passes. We're going into the informational items under Business Services, the Enrollment Report.
I'll just highlight that this continues to be bad news, you know, we continue to lose more students. Decline enrollment's a real thing and unfortunately, it's not going away.
And my only comment with this is today I learned in a meeting that. The moratorium for evictions ends the end of this month. And although there is. Funding to help families or individuals get through. The process of it is quite complicated to the point that it. Puts at risk many families of not working with their landlords or there's language barriers. Fear of public programs and so on. And that just really scared me because the other hat that I wear, right, is this, the other hat that I wear in that meeting, right? All the time as a school board member, me, hat and just the fear of continuing to lose our families and. We have really strong nonprofit organizations working hard to get families through those applications, but it's, they have to wait months. But some families can't afford, can't afford that and while. Judge decides and all that, it just gets so complicated and scary. And so it's just not, and it's not just here now, but it's everywhere, but. It, again, and other factors that impact our, our enrollment because we know it goes back to housing. And it hasn't been easy for families and individuals, so. It's just not helping our situation. But, okay. Now moving on to item M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent. Okay. We're about done. And future agenda items now. Seeing none here, okay. Our last item is adjournment.
To adjourn.
I'll second.
Who made that first?
David.
Oh, did you? I didn't even hear you, trustee Gracia. First by trustee Gracia and second by trustee Chu, do I hear that? Alright, Student Board Rep?
I.
All those in favor?
I.
Close or abstain? Good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.